Mayor Giles?
Here.
Councilmember Holmes?
Here. Here.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Present.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand, I will leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, would someone please make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda, Mike Machesek.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes, the agenda is approved. Our next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been distributed to all council members for our review. It's very complete. Would someone please make a motion, and then I need a second, and then there will be a roll call vote.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. This is Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie.
This is, this is Colby. I had a question regarding the consent agenda. And the, the department reports. I know that we've got a huge meeting in front of us tonight, and so I don't really want to pull them off the consent agenda for tonight. I wonder if it's a possibility to have them moved to the next meeting. I think there's, it might be good to hear some, from some of the department heads regarding some of the things happening this summer that we haven't really gotten a chance to talk to them about as a counsel. Just a thought.
So, Colby, your suggestion would be that we, that we, so, let's, let's think this through. Maybe what we could do is leave the written record as it is, the department reports, but ask to have the same report in the next July meeting, and we would be able to discuss that as a topic instead of having it in the consent agenda. Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if that's the, if that's what would work out, I'd appreciate it. Because I, like I said, I don't really want to try to take up any more time, but I think it would be worthwhile for stuff, some conversations with department heads, because we do have quite a bit of stuff happening right now.
But you'd be okay with us doing it as a counsel the next meeting? Or did you want to do it tonight?
No, next meeting would be great.
Okay. Would you?
Tonight.
Thank you, Colby. I don't think we need to make a motion on that. Annette and Bessie Jo, if you'd help me capture that for next meeting.
I made a note of that. So if Colby or Commissioner Nielsen, or excuse me, Counselor Nielsen is okay with you accepting the reports and leaving them on the consent agenda tonight, we can certainly put on the July 23rd agenda just a department head update type item on there and have people available to answer any questions. But if you don't want to accept the reports tonight, then I would ask you to just have them removed from the consent agenda and table to the next meeting.
I think, go ahead, Colby. What's your thoughts on that?
Could we just table them till the next meeting?
That'd be fine. Let's do that.
So I would have you remove them from the tonight's consent agenda and then have your motion on approving the consent agenda without them and then one to table them.
Yes. All right. May I have a motion to?
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without the department meetings or department reports.
Thank you.
That's the one you need right now.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colby. Roll call vote, please, on the consent agenda as amended.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen? Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. All right, our next item is our general public comment. And this, this month's, this particular meeting in early July has had a lot of public comment. So I'm going to read from the Agenda Bill and try to summarize that. Public comments were accepted in writing prior to this meeting tonight. All comments had to be submitted prior to 3:00, 3:00 PM today, July 9th, 2020. We did have a large volume of comments. I believe we have received perhaps over 500 written comments that were general comments for this, tonight's meeting. Is that correct, Bessie Jo?
Yes, that is correct. And they are posted on the council packet page of the website.
And thank you, Bessie Jo and staff. You did a great job of getting all of that information to us. Obviously, we're very interested in having time to read through all of the comments. Some of the comments that came in just under, between 2:00 and 3:00 PM, some of us have not read in entirety, but we will have an opportunity to do that. And we appreciate the input that we've received. As Bessie Jo said, it'll be attached to the packet in the minutes, and it'll be part of our permanent record. So with that, we will move into our first business item, which is the interview and board appointments to Housing Advisory Committee. That's Agenda Bill 20-185. This is an action item. We intend to hear from each prospective member. So a short interview of about three minutes. There will be one question that we will ask, and that is, we'd like to know, but when each committee member is introduced by Michelle, we'd like to know what you bring to the table that you think might be unique or really helpful to this committee. It's a very important committee, and counsel's very interested in hearing your thoughts on that. That will take us roughly a half an hour. We have an hour scheduled for this topic, for this action item. So the second half hour will be spent in deliberation in open, public setting. There may be some follow-up questions. But the counsel will deliberate and work together with staff to announce who, to make the appointments to the five-member committee. So with that, Michelle, you might have some quick introductory remarks to lead us off and introduce the people that have submitted their resumes and that we'll be hearing from tonight.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and counsel. Michelle Grunaveld, Community and Economic Development Director here at the city. As you know, you formed a new Housing Advisory Committee. And the purpose of this committee is really to implement our local housing program and our housing strategy. We were lucky enough to receive nine interested applicants. Since that time, one has decided not to participate in the process, but we still have eight people willing to serve on the committee. This is actually a really good problem to have for advisory committees. So they will all, ultimately, they'll serve terms of three years. When we start off the committee, we like to stagger the appointments with one, two, and three-year appointments. So not everybody is ready for reappointment at the same year. We specifically asked for people that have related backgrounds in housing, such as construction, professionals in real estate, land use law, building and construction, architecture, finance, and anything else that could help round out the conversation about housing and provide a group that has some expertise to help advise the staff and the counsel on this issue. So as you mentioned, each applicant was asked to provide a three-minute introduction and explaining why they're interested in the committee and what they can bring to the committee in terms of skill sets, commitments, and ideas. So just for the ease of the counsel, I thought we would, I will go through and introduce each interested person in the order that their resume and letter of interest are in the packet, just so you can follow along. So the first person in your packet is Robert Lyons.
Thank you, Michelle, for helping us with that.
You're welcome.
Yes. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Yeah, you're, you're coming through really well. We can, we can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Okay. Well, my computer's not to where I can do the video, so it'll just be audio. I know most of you are familiar with me. I was born and raised here in McCall. I'm a current commissioner on the planning and zoning. I think I could be a good addition to the advisory committee. I've spent over 19 years as a full-time agent, real estate agent in McCall. I know pretty much about every parcel of land in McCall, very familiar with the city parcels of land. I've worked a lot with the business owners in town. I was the president of the chamber for several years, did a lot with that. And I deal directly with the need of the housing. I, we get phone calls daily on it. I deal with people all the time that need housing. I personally have four rentals myself. I think I put that in the, my application letter. Every one of them is rented under market value because I know the need of employee housing for our area. And I do that by choice to help as much as I personally can. I think I've got some good ideas to be able to leverage the land that could be available. I've worked with developers in all aspects. Years past, I worked with a builder, actually built some myself with that builder. Very familiar with all forms of lumber industry and that as well. I just do think that I would be a good asset. I've worked with the Department of Commerce in the past. I think they may have some options that the city hopefully could utilize. I've got some inquiries in the past for them regarding this, the housing need. And I guess with that, I'm open to questions.
I think what we're gonna, we're gonna do is get through each candidate to make sure that we have time to, to have some deliberation after that. So let's move on to our next candidate, Michelle.
So the next person is Jacob Mopin.
Jacob, welcome. Are you on the line with us and on video?
I'm not on video, but I am here on the line with you.
Great. We can hear you really? Yeah, we can hear you.
We can get audio, so.
Thank you.
So I guess a brief background on me. I've worked in many different facets of the construction industry, from framing, well-drilling, excavation, painting, pretty much all of it. I was superintendent for Mopin Homes in the Valley for many years, working with my dad building homes. I then decided to get my finance degree from Boise State, which I did earn. I was in banking for around six years, working as a personal banker, and then later as a commercial loan officer. So I have a pretty strong knowledge and understanding of lending and finance practices in general. After leaving a few years ago, I moved up to McCall and became co-owner of Mopin Homes with my dad. We're a local home building company here in the Valley County area. So I have, you know, a pretty extensive knowledge as far as home building goes, how it operates, functions, all of those things. I'm actually currently in Boise right now, getting my real estate license to help me stay educated in my industry and assist with some of our operations. I consider myself a very hard-working kind of guy, honest, driven. You know, I kind of picked that up from my days in the Air Force as a N-10 crew chief and just have always had that instilled in me. I've seen the housing problem up here personally, you know, moving up here. We also own some of our framing contractors and have lost many of our carpenters because they can't find housing or where they're living gets sold off. And, you know, they just had to leave us and head back down to the valley. So I've experienced that personally. You know, I think I have some good ideas and good opinions that, you know, I could help implement into here to really kind of discuss the growth, you know, and all the issues that McCall is experiencing right now.
Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate your, your thoughts and, and appreciate you listing your experiences and adding a few things that we didn't know just from reading your resume. Thank you very much. Who is our next candidate?
Absolutely.
The next person is Joey Petry.
Joey, welcome. I don't see Joey's picture on, on my computer screen. Joey, can you hear me? Are you on conference call? Computer, audio?
You know, Bob, this is Robert Lyons. I know earlier, if he was on the phone, it came through and muted us. So if he's on there and he can hear this, maybe hit star six and it might unmute him if that's the problem.
Okay. Perhaps we could get someone to call Joey on a different line, and we'll come back to him and go to our next candidate.
Okay. Next is Diane and Phil Kushlin.
So on my question on that, I have a spreadsheet or a little table, actually, that we had handed out to us, and there were nine people listed. I believe Mr. Crowder has withdrawn his application. So it only lists Diane Kushlin on line two, but reading the resume, both of them are listed. So is that correct, Diane and Michelle? That both Diane and Phil are listed, and it's not a single position, it's both of them? I need some clarification on that, Michelle.
Okay. It's my understanding that they were interested in tag teaming and filling one position, but I'll let, I'll let them explain that.
Okay. Diane and Phil, could you explain what your intent was on that? Diane or, or Phil, can you hear us? Are you able to communicate with this audibly, verbally?
If your phone is muted, you need to hit star six. It takes 15 to 20 seconds to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Sounds like you, Diane. This is Mayor Bob. Were you able to hear our discussion earlier? Diane, this is Mayor Bob. Can you hear, can you hear our conversation?
This is painful. Could, could we just keep it moving along? Because it's, it's just painful.
All right. Michelle, who is our next candidate?
The next person is Maggie Wiseman.
Maggie, welcome.
If these guys are trying to, sorry, jig them up in here. If these guys are trying to join through the video, that may be the issue. I tried and it kept kicking me out, so I then just called the number, put in the conference ID and star six. But I don't, I don't know if everybody else is having the same issue I had beforehand, but that may be what's going on.
Thank you. And your name?
Jacob Mopin.
Thank you, Jacob. I'm sorry, I should have recognized your voice, and thanks for explaining. That's, that's a, that's a pretty good plausible answer. So Michelle, can we skip ahead to Tony? I see her face on the screen. Could we do that? And?
Sure. Tony Curtis, do you want to go ahead?
Welcome, Tony.
Yeah, here, hanging out, waiting. I'm here. So, yeah, so I moved to McCall about 20 years ago. And since I've been here, I've, I've been in construction, property management, building. I have some, some properties that I manage, you know, second homes, kind of that kind of thing. I have a few short-term rentals that I also manage. So pretty wide range. I'm days away from getting my actual real estate license. It's still waiting at IREC for approval. But anyway, so I kind of bring a pretty broad base of experience into, into the committee. Since I moved here in 2001, I have firsthand witnessed the housing shortage and watched it grow into not only a housing shortage, but an affordable housing shortage. I get calls, multiple calls every week for people looking for either a short term that's, you know, two or three months, while they wait to get something more steady. I have a long list of people that can't find housing here. I think that this is an important committee. I think this is an important step for us to take as a community to try to find a good resolution to this problem. I think I've got a few good ideas. I know that the group in general would have some great ideas and lots of broad background. And I think we could find a really, really good solution to this problem. I do have some developers that I've kind of worked with in the past that might be interested in kind of getting on board with some things. So I, it sounds like some other people have that kind of experience as well. So I think this is a good first step. I think we can get some good, solid direction going with this group.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And you're, I see your face on the screen, so you are joining us via Teams. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
Way to go.
Yeah. No, I'm kind of on this, I'm kind of on this platform mode. We just did three full weeks of real estate classes in this mode. So I'm kind of, I'm an old-school girl here now with this, this kind of platform.
Well, thank you for joining us.
But I would also, yeah, I don't know if I mentioned too, but I volunteered on the fire department for 11 years up here. I was a volunteer firefighter and EMT. So I have a pretty strong desire to find a new commitment, a new place to kind of volunteer and put that good energy out there, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Who else have we got on the list, Michelle? I don't think we've heard from Nick, or did we call on Maggie?
We haven't. I did receive a text from Diane Kushlin that says that she's unmuted her phone. So maybe we'll try her again.
All right. Diane, if you can hear us and you have your phone unmuted, please join us and give us a three-minute update on why you'd like to join the committee.
Okay. Is Nick Zello there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Nick. Go ahead.
So my wife and I came back to the hometown where she grew up. Her family helped to build this area, working on ranches, setting up stores, small businesses, driving trucks, working in the hospitals here, and also working for the Forest Service. We have, through the family, developed a deep concern for the area, and we want to help. We've had a career, and we've chosen to walk away from corporate life for the most part and build a more deliberate life. And so now it's time to start giving back. We've been back in McCall for a few years now. Bought the current house that we're in in 2017, and we're continuing to renovate that. Together, we have built or renovated nine properties. Some of them we have rented, others we have just sold. But we have collectively been working on houses for about 15 years now. One of our first dates was re-roofing her house. So together, we have managed to find a way in the construction industry. A little bit about me. I was raised in another small town, but in Indiana. I was a mechanical engineer at Purdue, started my career at GM. I was given a fellowship by General Motors to go back to graduate school for my MBA. So I got my MBA from Kelleb Graduate School of Management at Northwestern University. I have done a lot of traveling, both for fun and for work, including living overseas a couple of times, once in England and once in Indonesia. And I've been able to see a full spectrum of housing problems and housing solutions, including the thankful people who were upwardly mobile and were able to afford a six-foot-by-10-foot apartment. And when you see that sort of living arrangement, it changes your paradigm on what is an acceptable solution and what is something that other people would not even consider. Professionally, I have managed product lines in companies ranging from single-digit millions to multiple billions of dollars in some of the largest companies in the world. Currently, though, I am providing consulting services from here in McCall for companies in construction and in space, space hardware. They are very different products, but they both need the same thing, and that's what I bring. What they need is a, a method for identifying what they want and what they need, and then for developing the plan to achieve it. That's what I do. That's my, that's my career. So for my clients, I tell them the question is not whether something can be done, but rather how. And when they tell me it can't, I ask them what would have to change so that they can. And once you identify what would have to change, the path to getting there is much more simple to see. And that's how I help my clients to succeed. I don't claim to know all the answers of what McCall needs today, but I have read the McCall Housing Strategy document, and it clearly defines a problem. And that is that anybody that's at 100% AMI or below, they're only able to afford about a $210,000 property. In doing the research in the last 12 months, McCall only had 18 sales in the less than $210,000 range. And of those, the overwhelming majority were condos or manufactured houses. Condos have HOA fees, which further reduces their affordability, so I would say that it's even less than that. And then when you look at manufactured houses, most people can't get financing on a manufactured house, so the problem is that, in reality, less than a dozen working families at or below the AMI have been able to afford housing in McCall in the last year. We have a daughter that works at the Shore Lodge. She is a professional. She works as a chef. She faces that same problem. We have another daughter who would love to come to McCall and can't afford to. I want to help those people. I have formed a partnership here locally with a builder, and we are currently evaluating properties to prepare proposals for development. Personally, I think the solution is obvious, that the housing shortage is solved through microhousing. It's inherently affordable. You cannot beat the fact that small is more affordable. That relieves the city of having to provide millions of dollars in incentives and instead provides an unscratched itch for people who just want to be able to have a place with a roof and heat. I've seen microhousing in many forms, in England, mentioned in Indonesia, and also in San Francisco. But that's what the product looks like. That's not the hard part. The hard part is figuring out how do you deliver that product so that all the budgets balance? And again, that's what I've been doing for a career. So that's what I would bring, and I would like to leverage my career's worth of experience in industry, getting things accomplished by harnessing the power of teams, the creativity that comes from a well-led team, and always having to find a creative way to ensure that the books balance and that the customers are happy. So for that reason, I would appreciate your support by naming me to this housing commission.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate you explaining a little bit more than your resume. It was very interesting, and we appreciate your comment. Michelle, I was able to see Pat Hill's face on the screen. Is, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Can, can you go next, Mr. Hill? Appreciate it.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good. I'm Pat Hill. Excited to get an opportunity to get on the board. I don't know if Michelle had the opportunity to send you a PDF of a couple of the projects I worked on here, but I think they, they outlined my qualifications well and experience. The first one was a project, you know, I did in the Rio Vista area. It was part of the Smart Growth Plan. I think that was done in about 2004. And I happen to live in the neighborhood, put together a couple neighbors, was able to acquire about 12 acres of property. I lived on it myself. We created a nice PUD. The, the, the reason I believe it's relevant is we took three little parcels, two owners, and JV'd with a local builder to do 101-unit subdivision. It was a mixed use of, of small, and I like the micro-living, or I call it minimalist, minimalist retreat, tiny homes, however you slice it. He's absolutely correct. Smaller amount of square footage is, is the path to affordability in our area. I'm being a local developer. I've actually designed a 600-square-feet home, as modeled after a very successful development in Bend, Oregon. Sent some great pictures to Michelle, and I'm getting bids to do a prototype on either my project here in McCall, or I've also picked up a project down in Boise as well. The other one I set, which is I think more of a public-private development, and this is the key as we move forward, is, is, you know, creating a collaborative, collaborative effort of different people, different skill sets, and then hopefully individual landowners who see the value to contribute to the community. So on that project, we, we, we started with affordable housing, the actual tax credits that, that built the springs here in McCall, and actually I was personally responsible for putting together the Northwest Passage in Donley, mostly because of my experience on this project. But we put together tax credits. We worked closely with the economic development specialist at the time, was John Blay. John was instrumental in putting together a grocery store and a bank. So I actually donated, you know, five acres to the, to the housing. We donated the acreage for the bank and the grocery store. The amount of infrastructure funds that became available would truly allow me to develop out the entire projects, which would have been about another 10 acres of affordable housing and then some commercial development. So what the, the, the experience of having that, 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 you know, time, effort, and skill sets to put that together with public, private neighbors, all of the neighbors had to collaborate. We had to relocate the highway, work with another commercial developer on the highway. I see that as the future to make a meaningful impact. You know, there's a lot of different ways that we need to, we need to attack it. Micro-living ones, you know, collaborative efforts to get to the apartments and build in scale, but there's lots of ways, and, and myself, I, I like to, this is my new passion. You know, I've pretty much semi-retired from the real estate business. This community, as I said in my letter, has been very good to me, and, and I love learning new things. So now I'm, I'm extremely competent on the horizontal approach. I spent a year traveling the country. I think I gave a list of Dallas, Houston, Vegas, you know. Boxable is a company out of Vegas. I actually have a reservation down on a $49,000, one-bedroom unit that they literally, you know, fold up and fold out on project, comes out completely built, including utilities, HVAC, and even refrigerator. Boxable is the name of the company. They're absolutely amazing. Hopefully they'll, they'll, they'll be supposedly getting product by the end of this year. Renew Foundation in Dallas, it's a tiny home or apartment shipping container manufacturing facility, operated by a nonprofit, does a phenomenal job. What he's looking at doing is literally thousands of units, creating regional manufacturing facilities, combining with, combined with providing opportunities for employment. Great guy, really hoping it works out for him. He's accomplished quite a bit in the last year since I've visited him. Within the next year, he's hoping to actually move some product. So any of that's the kind of experience that I bring to the table. I'm, I'm excited about trying to move forward, and of course, if there's any, any questions when you get to that, I'm happy to answer them. Hello?
Bob, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I think I am unmuted now. So Michelle, I had a question for you. Has anyone called in on our candidate list that we haven't heard from?
I did receive a text from Diane, who said she's now available and unmuted.
Great. Diane, we would love to hear from you. This is Mayor Bob.
And maybe we want to go through and just go through the list again for those few people that weren't able to unmute. So that would be Joey Petrie, if you're there.
I see that Joey Petrie is on, but he's muted. So Joey, you need to hit star six, and then you'll unmute, and it'll take about 20 seconds.
And then if Diane, Phil, or Maggie are on the phone and unmuted, I know it takes a little while to unmute, feel free to speak up.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can you hear us now?
I hear one person. Is this Diane?
It is.
Diane, welcome. This is Mayor Bob. We would love to hear.
Yeah, I am so glad we made this work. Thank you so much. I think you wanted an explanation of our letter, and we are interested in being co-joined, or if you want to choose one of us over the other, we would not be offended. So it's really whatever meets your needs. And I would just start by saying I've been visiting McCall for 30 years, and in the last year, we were able to get a second home there, and I've been working for the city for the last 18 months, and it's really all just been a great, great joy. So that's my first qualification. It's just a real emotional connection with the community. My career has been in community planning, and I've worked for some other resort and high-end communities such as Carmel and Sun Valley and Mercer Island, all of whom had issues of affordable housing. And in addition, over the last few years, for about 11 years, I was the staff for the Urban Land Institute chapter here in Idaho. And we, every year, organized a housing conference, which put together a lot of various issues related to housing over the years. And in particular, we provided some technical assistance to local communities, the most relevant being a request from the city of Boise for us to study how they could incentivize housing downtown. And at that time, there wasn't a lot of housing being accomplished, and so we put together a report, much of which I authored and tried to synthesize the various participants' opinions and recommendations. And so that is, that's kind of the highlights of my experience. I guess I don't have any particular solutions for the city. I think every community is unique. There's a thousand different ideas out there. And what I bring is a good, a good, good skills at synthesizing and integrating various issues, which I've learned through my years of public policy. So with that, I will shift this over to Phil, who's sitting here next to me.
Thank you, Diane. Go ahead, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as Diane indicated, we're pretty flexible on how we might participate, if it can be. One, it gets appointed, the other person will basically back them up as, as best they can, in whatever skills we can bring in secondary role. My background, as many of you know me, I've worked a little bit with the city and the recent urban real project development. My personal experience, I'm a native Idahoan. I experienced with McCall back in 1954, so I've been coming up there for a long time, as Diane indicated, that's finally resulted in our ownership of property up there. My professional experience has been in local government management. I was city manager for 26 years in Oregon and Washington. I led the Boise Redevelopment Agency or Capital City Development Corporation for 12 years before I retired. And so in basically all of those roles, we were significantly involved in development issues, understanding the public policy aspects of how that affects the, the cost of housing for good and bad. And then for the last 20 years, I've been deeply involved in Idaho, so I'm very familiar with the statutory, constitutional challenges associated with how the housing question fits into, to that issue. So again, we care deeply about the community. We understand that there isn't going to be a silver bullet on any of these things, but there's going to be a little bit of this and a little bit of that. And hopefully, understanding what the roadblocks are and what the opportunities might be, we can thread our way through that to come up with a, an effective process that's not going to happen overnight, but certainly something that's going to require a lot of work and energy, but will result in a solution to the issues I think we've seen evolve over time and is getting, I think, less and less benign as, as we move forward. So hopefully, you can find a role for us to play in this process, because we think it's a, it's a significant issue, both for people who live there now or who might want to live there, and the, the economic basis for the community. So with that, be happy to answer any questions to my hands.
Thank you, Phil. All right, Michelle, feel free to interrupt me if you hear another voice coming online, but I think we're going to enter into the second part of our hour.
I would like to say one thing. Hello? I'm, I'm not running for the officer positions. My name's Jen McKay. I grew up in a mountain home. I've, you know, lived in Palo Alto, San Francisco, Chicago, LA, New York, and most recently in Chicago, was involved with a group called Weneka is Neighborly. It was a very wealthy community that had no interest, for the most part, in affordable housing, and I would hate to see McCall do this. I am nowhere near anywhere anyone else that has spoken in terms of, you know, quality of, of experience, but I'm just very passionate about it, and I think that if we don't have affordable housing in this community, we're going to have a lot of problems. So, thank you.
Thank you for your input. We're going to move into the deliberation phase, so I have two, two questions I'm going to ask each council member. First question is, do you have enough information tonight that you would like to deliberate tonight? On the agenda, we have about 30 minutes more that we can spend on this topic. So do you want to deliberate? And if so, can you name five people? And if we get to that point, then we can decide which person is on the one-year, the two-year, and the three-year terms. So that's the question. Do you want to deliberate? Yes or no? And if yes, are you prepared when we come back around the second time as I call on you? Can you name five people that you think would make up a good committee? It's my understanding that our goal as a city and as a council is to include as many of the various skill sets as we can. For example, construction, architecture, finance, planning, project management, real estate. Those would be examples of different skills that people bring to the table. So I'm going to start with Mike Machazek, and then I will go to the other four council members, including myself. Mike, what's your thoughts?
My thoughts are the question of whether or not we can deliberate this evening.
Yes, are you prepared to? Do you have enough information that you could give the group five names?
Yes.
Okay, good. I won't ask you for the five names yet. Tom, how are you feeling about this process? Would you, do you have enough information that you would be able to recommend five names?
Yeah, I believe so. It's a, it's a super-qualified field, so it looks like it's, it's between picking who's better and who's best.
Thank you. Melanie? So.
Muted.
Melanie, could you unmute? And the basic question I'm asking is, would you like to make a decision tonight?
Sorry, my button was a little quick to trigger again. I have plenty of information, I feel, and I'm really happy to see that we've got as many qualified people as we do, which makes it really hard also, but yes, I have enough.
Thank you. Colby?
Yeah, generally I have enough information. I feel like it's doing a disservice to the folks that were not able to overcome the technology hurdle. That was pretty, pretty disappointing. I think that, that there's two folks that we didn't hear from, and I think that they, it'd be good to hear from them, so it's a bit of a dilemma. Personally, for me, I have, I could easily pick five names. For me, I have, I could easily pick five names. Got a lot of great candidates. And so I guess I could go back and say thank you all for submitting your resumes and being interested in this. It's really exciting. Whoever we choose to put on this is, we're, we're going to do some good things, I think. So thanks for that. And, you know, I'm probably the minority voice on the concern with, with the two not being able to call in. So I'll leave that up to you guys.
So let me put you on the spot. Do you want us to delay? Because, you know, I don't, I'll ask Michelle whether that's a crisis or not. But would you like us to delay? And then have another meeting and interview the people that didn't, weren't able to navigate our technology? Are you expressing a frustration or are you suggesting we should wait? I would like to know your opinion.
I'm expressing a frustration. As it's been a frustration with mine over the years with the city council appointments to, to committees without opportunities for people to, to be interviewed. So yeah, I am expressing that. But also, it would be nice to keep moving on this. So I am okay with making a decision, not overly happy. I guess, yeah, I would like to hear from Michelle, too.
Also, I would just like to say that Joey is trying to get on, but he's having problems unmuting. So hopefully, he'll, he'll be able to get on here shortly.
So Michelle, do you, would you, as our primary staff, recommend that we wait another month? Or do you feel an urgency that we need to get a committee named tonight?
I think ultimately, that's a council decision. Our next meeting's in two weeks, so it's up to you. I wanted to reach out to see if Maggie's on the phone, just because I know she planned on attending, just to see if she was able to unmute while Joey is trying to.
Michelle, I'm on now.
Oh, fantastic.
Joey, we can hear you. We.
Oh, pretty good. Thanks, Bob.
Each candidate, this is Mayor Bob. Each candidate has taken approximately three minutes to talk about what they bring to the table and some of their unique skills and passion for helping on this committee. So please lead us through your thoughts.
Well, I think I just have some unique living experiences and lived in different, different spectrums of the, of income brackets, so to speak. You know, I've been involved in the community for some 45 years. And I'd like to be a voice for people that, that have been marginalized and that have had difficulty finding places to live. And, and for people that, you know, are trying to get a foothold into the community. So right now, I live in subsidized housing, I guess it would be. I live, I call them the projects. And I've, you know, I've owned the house for 35 years. And, you know, I just think I, I might possibly bring a different perspective. You know, as far as special, special skills or anything, I don't know that I, I have anything special, but I just have a lot of insights into, into life itself. You know, I'm 70 something years, 71 years old. So I've lived a lot of life and I've lived, I've had many experiences. So that's basically why I'd like to get involved. And I like to be part of, a bigger part of the community, you know. So that's my story, everybody. And if there's a place for me, I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate being on this committee.
Thank you, Joey.
Hello. Hello, Mayor. Mayor? This is Lori Johnson. I don't know if I am unused to her not.
So I'm trying to reach Maggie Weissman. Michelle, I believe that's our last candidate that we have not heard from. One more person. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. I'm not going to take comments. This is not a public hearing. It's a deliberative process and an interview. So unless your name is Maggie Weissman, I really don't need to hear from anyone else.
Why?
Okay. So I have asked each council member if they want to move forward. And it sounds like we want to deliberate and name five people. So my next question then is, would someone make a motion and name five people? And that would give us a draft, a starting point then. And perhaps when you make your motion, you could provide just a couple of sentences of logic of why, you know, why you named those five people. Well, I'll wait for that motion.
Hello, my name's Robert Campbell. I'd like to go ahead and, and, most of Jacob Moppen. One thing that nobody happened to recognize there.
So let me interrupt you, Mr. Campbell. The motion in the, our city government, the way our constitution is written in the state of Idaho, the motion has to be made by one of the council members. So I will wait for that motion from one of the five city council members.
Bob, this is Melanie.
This is Melanie.
I really, I am having kind of a hard time because I do somewhat agree with Colby in that, you know, it's really hard that we haven't heard from Maggie because she, she does seem in her, her interest and her experience to have something that may be very interesting to us. So, you know, I almost feel like it's not time to complete this. I would like to hear from her.
All right. I would recommend to the other three council members, including myself, that maybe are ready to move ahead, that we delay this. I think it's very important that we have near consensus from the councils. So we have two members wanting to delay. My recommendation is that, Michelle, you bring this back to us. Make sure that we have a chance to talk to Maggie.
I think we have Maggie. She just, she just joined, but she has to unmute. Star six, Maggie. It takes about 20 seconds. I do see her number just popped up.
Maggie, we're going to wait a half a minute for you. Please press star six. This is Mayor Bob. We would love to hear from you. Thank you for explaining that, Bessie Jo.
Okay. Am I on?
Yes, I hear a different voice. I think it's you, Maggie. This is Mayor Bob. Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Bob. Yes, this is Maggie.
So we.
What?
Have you been able to listen in and hear from the other candidates? We've asked each person to. Okay?
No, I have not. I just, I just got this call, so.
Gotcha. Well, hello. Welcome. What we have done is each candidate, there are eight people that are on our list. And each person has had about three to five minutes to talk about their experiences in their life and their passions and what they bring to the table, should they be selected to be on the Housing Advisory Committee. So we would love to hear from you.
Okay, do you have specific questions or am I supposed to just talk?
You're supposed to just talk.
All right, I can do that. Okay, so I, I grew up in Billings, Montana, lived there for years. You all have my resume, I'm sure.
Yes, we do.
Okay. On from that, I mean, there's a lot of old stuff. But I was in the Peace Corps. I got a degree, sociology masters. I have taught in New York City. I've done all kinds of things. I am now in Seattle and in McCall. I have been a real estate agent for the last 15 years. And I am, I have seen so much. You talk about Big Sky, Sun Valley, Jackson Hole, Whistler, all these places, and they don't have, they don't have housing for people to live in that have to work. And so to me, and like I said, I sell real estate in Seattle also, affordable housing is a huge issue. I think that there are things that can be done. I was really happy to see the housing that went in. I don't remember the name of it, but by the recycling, just past the recycling. I was happy to see that Donley had put some affordable housing in. But you don't want your, your laborers to all have to be imported from Florida or have to drive through the pass from New Meadows. I just think it's important to have affordable housing. I, I work with a group in Seattle on homelessness because we're trying to find permanent housing. And as an aside, we've had a person on my block in Seattle who has been homeless. He's lived in his car. He's worked in the area for years. But our area finally found a place for him to live in an affordable housing complex at Magnuson Park. So to me, affordable housing is a must. I think that it will make a huge difference for McCall. I am here, I have been here since March. And I can be down here anytime you need to. Everything now is being done, of course, with Zoom or just like this. But anyway, do you have any specific questions with me or something I should have said that I didn't?
We, we don't at this time because Maggie, what we've, what we've done for each candidate, and as I said earlier, we have eight. We had scheduled an hour tonight. So we were trying to just cover the basics like, just like you did. And then I, I will go back and ask each council member if they are ready to deliberate and name five people and make a motion. So thank you for being, Maggie, thank you for being patient with us and for getting on the line and sharing your insights. We appreciate it.
Okay, and I hope that, just because I'm from Seattle, I do have a Valley County license plate on my car. But I hope that that is the only thing that you use to disqualify me.
We would never do that. Maggie, we were very impressed with your credentials that you submitted in writing and we would never do that. But thank you for having a sense of humor. All right, I'm going to go back through council and ask you. Michelle, I believe we've heard from everyone on my list. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Council, would you like to deliberate and name five people tonight? Mike, what's your thoughts?
Well, I got up to fill my water glass. Did I just miss the, I thought we were putting this out to the next meeting or we're comfortable moving forward with the fact that we've heard from everybody?
So when you were out at the water glass, the last person got a chance to talk. So I think that was the issue that Colby had listed and also Melanie was concerned about. So I believe we've overcome that issue. So based on, so you're ready to move forward?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I guess my input was, you know, yes, we do have a great group of people here. It's, it's a shame when you can't put everybody on the committee based upon the numbers. And we need the number of great candidates and interested parties. I was going to put, I was going to suggest number one. I don't, in any means to be exclusive of anybody, but I do think that an opportunity to bring Pat Hill into a committee and with his background, experience, certainly support. I also think taking advantage of the potential opportunity of having Diane and Phil Kuslin, who have incredible public policy experience. So with Pat Hill, with his development experience, and with their public policy, and Robert Lyons, who I think has done an excellent job on planning and zoning and also has a very, very deep understanding of real estate and that. I just wanted to put my two cents in that I think those would be the, those would be the three based upon what we're trying to look for is the most experience in these areas. And those would be three that I think really stand out as the most experienced that I, that I understand. So that's my sense.
All right. Tom, your thoughts?
Well, yeah, I just kind of been going through and I think, I think my list without any, without any term, times next to him would be Robert Lyons. He's got a lot of experience in, in a lot of things. Jacob Moppen, as a young guy, he's got a lot of experience already. And I like Pat Hill, Tony Curtis. Just impressive resumes. And then Nick Zello was the other one that I was looking at for, to round out my five. It's just so much experience with everybody that it's, it's really difficult to pick the, who has the most or more, so.
So could you review your, your five, please?
Robert Lyons, Jacob Moppen, Nick Zello, Pat Hill, and Tony Curtis.
Okay. All right. Let's hear from Melanie.
Hi, guys. Wow, this is, this is definitely hard. Is Robert Lyons still on the phone? And if he is, can I ask a question?
Sure. I believe he's still on the phone. Go ahead, ask the question.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes. So Robert, do you, this is Melanie. Do you feel like, do you feel like you have any conflicts with Boise and then going into this committee as well?
No, I don't see there's a conflict. And I also did ask that before I submitted my letter. And I believe Bessie Jo and Morgan and Michelle checked with Bill Nichols. And he didn't see a conflict in it either. I think it could be a plus with the extra knowledge of the codes and incentives that the city's offering. So I, I think it could be more of a plus.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for answering that. So my five, Bob, would be Pat Hill, Jacob Moppen, Diane Kuslin, Tony Curtis, and Robert Lyons.
All right, Colby, you're next.
Okay. Found it there. So, you know, everyone has some great experience and knowledge that has applied here. Some of the things that I've been debating is, you know, the discussion of the range of housing needs. I know that micro and tiny and little houses multiple times. I feel like that's just one aspect on a broad range of our housing needs here. I know that we don't really get to ask anyone all the questions again. But I feel like that's, that's one of the filters for who I'm looking at is who, who might be able to see beyond just a single, a single solution, which I think I don't can. So everyone listening, don't. So everyone listening don't get the wrong idea. Then another key thing, uh, that I've been kicking around while seeing is, is what are, outside of the, just the actual housing, what about the housing programs? The ability to get people, the ability to have programs that help people achieve their goals, for achieving their, their housing needs, whether it's, whether it's an old person or a family looking to be able to buy or build something once a year on turn. Um, big range there. And so, run that filter. Additionally, and finally is the, uh, degree of separation struggle. You know, I know that some people may be a few degrees separated from having to, uh, find a place to live. Um, some folks are, are closer to, to that struggle than others, I feel like, on here. Though it's a small town, so I'm sure everyone knows someone who's faced this challenge, either a friend, family, or a personal. So that's another one. I know we do have plenty of realtors, soon to be realtors. Which, I don't know how I feel about that, but you guys are great. So enough of my spiel, my list, um, would be Diane and Phil because they have a really great foundation, I think would be extremely beneficial to this program. Joey Petrie, um, he has a long-term knowledge of the area, um, and will make a different perspective, um, and I think it would be very valuable to this committee. Um, Pat Hill, I think has shown, has people that have skills and experience hopefully here, um, to, to bring some great insights. Uh, next.
This is so slow and so painful, like, talk faster.
Could you repeat that, please, uh, Colby? I've got three names, Diane, Joey, and Pat. Who's your fourth?
Sure. Uh, ma'am, who, who was, who was saying this is painfully slow? Can you state your name, please?
Yeah, my name is John McKay. Like, make a point, like, this is painfully slow. Like, you're, you're literally saying words like this.
Okay, this is our city council meeting, and we'll see how we achieve. You don't have to, you can keep your phone. Um, Nick, I think would be a good one. And I would say Maggie, specifically to bring the perspective of those programs, um, of how, how we could get people into housing. That's, that's my decision-making process. I think that everyone else here is, has some great, great skills and experience, and I, I think that there's room for everyone to continue to be involved in this because this is just the beginning of this. And I, again, I really appreciate everyone taking the time to, uh, put their, put their name out there. Um, sorry for all the technical difficulties and the extra time, and apparently my slow talking. So that's, that's my list, and I'll shut up now.
Hey, please don't do that. Um, the deliberation's been extremely meaningful. Colby, you're a, a real key player, and in my opinion, you were kind of the visionary of our council of getting a housery, Housing Advisory Committee set up. I think it's, the decision in front of us is really difficult, like we've all shared. I'm gonna make a suggestion that you, um, make a motion, including the five names. I had Diane, Joey, Pat, Nick, and Maggie. I would like you to make that motion, and I would ask another council member to second it, and then, um, we will have a roll call vote.
Bob, can I interject?
Yes.
Not that I have any opposition to any of the candidates, but wouldn't it make more sense if we just put down a number of names, who, who ended up having the most votes or something to that effect?
Agreed.
Rather than just taking Colby's suggestion, nothing against Colby.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, I agree with that one.
Does anyone, does anyone in the city staff know how to do that? Help, to help me?
Um, I can help you because I wrote down the selections. So it looks like Pat Hill has four votes, um, Diane and Phil Cuslin have three votes, Robert Lyons has three votes, and then Jacob Mopin has two, and Nick Zello has two, and Tony Curtis has two.
Okay, does that help us get to five, or do we have seven now?
How about, how about your, your pick, Mayor?
Hang on a minute, I want you guys to own this. So, um, Michelle, does that get us to five, or do we have?
That gets us to six.
Could you, could you list those again, please?
Sure, um, I'll list them in order of votes. So four votes was Pat Hill, three votes was Robert Lyons and the Cuslins, and then two votes is Jacob Mopin and Nick Zello. And Tony Curtis, sorry, Tony.
So we got a pick between Jacob, Nick, and Tony?
Um, it sounds like Jacob, Nick, and Tony had two votes, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Two of the three.
And we need two of the three, yes.
Okay, and Colby asked me to weigh in, and I, I will. Appreciate you asking me. So I, I think on the Cuslins, we should have one person. I'd recommend Diane do that, so that it's really clean. Um, Pat, Robert, and Diane, I'm fine with those three. Um, the next three that had two votes, I would say, um, I would recommend Tony, Pat, and Nick. That would be my.
Who were you voting, who were you suggesting, Bob? I couldn't hear you. It's Mike.
Say again, Mike?
I, I heard Pat, Diane, Robert, I didn't hear who out of Jacob, Nick, and Tony.
And then if they, if they unmute themselves and continue, then we disconnect them.
I would say, uh, Tony and Nick.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. Counsel, what's your thoughts on that group? Would, and if, if you can live with that, would someone make a motion? And thanks for the process, all of you, that, you're very creative. I want to thank, um, Mike and Colby. You guys had some great ideas. So that would be my five. Pat, Robert, Diane, Nick, and Tony.
I'm in here, I'm telling you, and then, like, I know, I know, I'm sorry.
Good point. Mayor Giles' list that he read off, uh, so, well, we got, actually, never mind, we got to figure out a one-year term, a two-year term, three-year term, too.
Yes, we still have to do that.
Um, so that's, that's, that's the, the motion, I guess. We can't really make a motion until we decide who's one, two, three, right? Or am I wrong on that?
I think you could, um, I think we as human beings, it's, we, it's kind of good to break it down into two decisions. Who do you want? Which five do you want? And then it'll be fairly easy to decide who you want to be on a one-year term, two-year, and three-year term.
Copy. Well, I make a motion to, uh, appoint the, the list that the mayor most recently said, I believe that was Pat, Rob, Diane, Nick, and Tony, correct?
That is correct. Would someone second that motion?
I'll second the motion. This is Mike, and then I would add the second, then remember, we're gonna add the second part. My suggestion on the second part is start with the three-year terms at the top and go right down the list.
Great, good, good suggestion.
So either to add that to Colby's motion, or if it's gonna be two separate motions, but I was under the impression we were making one. So if we want to make one, we could just add that to Colby's motion, and what do you think?
That's a great suggestion.
So I'm starting at Pat with, um, a three-year term, and then I see how it falls in.
Great.
Excellent.
Okay, we have a motion to name five people. Pat, Robert, Diane, Nick, and Tony. And the, starting at the top, with the top vote-getters, would be the longest terms, and we would work that through. For example, Tony would be one of the shorter terms. Um, and staff will help me with that. That's the motion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Good. Need to second on her?
Um, okay, so, uh, Councilmember Nielsen?
Yep.
Are, are we clear on, on which, who is in which term?
Yeah, Bob, Colby made the motion, I seconded it, I believe, unless we need to rephrase that.
I heard someone in the Senate say hasn't been seconded yet. Um, the motion was made by Colby Nielsen, and then Mike, you seconded.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, Councilmember Nielsen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Metezek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Counsel, thank you. Um, for those of you in the audience, this, this may seem like a, a slow process, um, but I think our government works really well when we, um, are working through things together. And I want to compliment the council on your patience and your thoughtfulness. Thank you very much. Good decision.
And Mayor, if I could just add one thing, um, anybody who was not selected, feel free to contact me because, um, these meetings are public meetings, and you can still participate in them, even if you're not a voting member. And we also have some other committees that have vacancies that you may be interested in. So feel free to reach out to me, um, as we would love to have you involved in this topic or others. So thank you for applying.
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks for helping us. All right. We are now on to our next item, which is a presentation from Trident Holdings. This is Agenda Bill twenty dash one ninety-eight. And I would like to ask Annette to give us a brief introduction about our responsibilities and what the goal of this topic is for the council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Annette Spickerd, the city manager from McCall. Um, tonight you have before you Alec Williams, who's joined us via the team's call. He's on the screen now. Um, Mr. Williams is with Trident Holdings, and he's going to present information to you regarding a proposal they have pending at the Idaho State Land Board for a swap of private timberland, uh, for Idaho Department of Lands, Endowment Lands in the McCall area. I just want to remind everybody that the McCall City Council does not have any approval or denial authority in this process. All of that rests with the governor and the state land board. Uh, however, um, the proposal is of interest to the city to learn about it and potentially comment on it due to the location of the lands within McCall and the McCall Impact Area. Um, and so tonight is merely a presentation only. Uh, council may have some questions, but this is not a public hearing. We're not taking any public testimony. Uh, all of the comments that have been submitted in writing regarding this project or proposal, um, that were received up until, I think around four o'clock today, have been compiled and provided to the city council. And if the city council so desires, staff can, uh, package that up and submit it to the Idaho State Land Board as well for their process. Um, and so with that, uh, sort of ground rules, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Williams. And I do want to, uh, comment that if we have members of the public that choose to interrupt the presentation or interrupt the council during their questions, we will give you the opportunity to mute yourself. Um, however, if there is a lot of disruption during this presentation, uh, either myself or the city clerk may, um, may ask Mayor Giles to take a pause in the meeting and take a five-minute recess so that we can, um, disconnect the disruptive callers and have people join and unmute only. Um, so we're asking everyone to please be respectful and allow the presentation to be held and allow the city council members to ask their questions tonight. So thank you very much for that. We appreciate your co- cooperation. And, uh, with that, Mr. Williams, if you're ready to present, please go ahead.
Thank you, Annette. Um, let me preface my comments just by saying, uh, that this is a very long process. Uh, you were right that the city is not voting on this, um, nor is the land board anytime soon. Um, this type of process takes, i- is measured in months and months, if not years. Uh, and, and it's, it's necessary for processes to take the appropriate amount of time so that we can get it right. What my comments hope to do is not to, to relay a specific plan, although we have lots of thoughts that we have collected from a variety of folks around the community, that we are trying to incorporate into a comprehensive, um, growth management plan for McCall's next several generations. Uh, my hope for these comments are to outline a process. A process that is able to, uh, take authority for the zoning of these lands around McCall and to, um, take it from the state level and lower it to the county and city level, to the people that are closest to the problems, and then all the way down to the community members themselves, uh, who generally have had, uh, little, if any, say, over what, um, what happens to these lands and how they're used. So by quick way of background, um, uh, my name is Alec Williams. My, uh, great-grandparents were Quaker settlers of Caldwell, and while we're not certainly the oldest family in McCall, there are many, many older and have longer histories of us. McCall has been an important place in our family's history for, for four generations. Um, so our home site here was built in nineteen thirty-seven, and I always grew up, uh, spending some of the most significant moments of my life here, um, to include on the lands that are under, uh, are under discussion today. Um, uh, I spent some time in the active-duty military, um, earned a Bronze Star in Afghanistan, and then a Navy Commendation Medal in Iraq, um, have a business degree, an engineering degree, and a law degree. And when I was in Iraq this most recent time, I made a, a personal commitment to myself that I would only ever work on projects in my civilian life that were as meaningful and as significant to me on an emotional level as, um, the reasons that inspired my, my military service. Um, I worked in a, in a variety of private sector roles, but I quit my job to work on this project. And I'd like to give a little bit of a story as to why that is and why we felt that this was, um, a pending problem that needed a solution crafted, tailor-made to, to solving it. Um, so there's a really important initial distinction we need to make, um, which is that there's a major difference between what we think of as public lands and what are actually state endowment lands. So essentially, the federal government's deeded to the state a bunch of, you know, millions of acres to, not for the state's ownership, but for the state to act as trustee over a trust that included these lands meant to be managed on behalf of what are primarily school beneficiaries. So these are the K through 12 school systems and the three state universities of the University of Idaho, ISU, Lewis and Clark State University, and, and then a small element that goes toward kind of public hospitals. For that reason, they are, they are managed to produce a long-term economic return for these primarily at-school beneficiaries. And that's an important distinction because while they are endowment lands, they have been, you know, very graciously kept open to public use. The challenge, I think, for the state is that as McCall has transitioned from the logging community it was 100 years ago, and logging is the easiest source of revenue to gain on big tracts of timber acreage to the communities today, which has, while it still has logging activities, it has all sorts of other activities as well, to include visitors and recreation and homeownership and a variety of different industries that have made, you know, managing those lands in the same ways very challenging. And so we, we became aware that these lands, you know, represented a drag on the endowment's portfolio returns. You know, it's not that all of the lands are unprofitable. Some of them are, but generally taken as a whole, these lands fall short of the, the target return that the endowment has to be able to provide. And it's, you know, it's, it's targeting this return to be, to be able to meet school budgets year over year. There are not a lot of great alternatives that the state has in these types of decision-making. They have routes like land exchanges, which are constitutionally provided for. And then they have routes that sell piecemeal, smaller parcels of lands over time. We were, we looked at the history of the state's choices for land management in the year of its endowment lands in the vicinity of McCall. And I think at each juncture, you know, we saw a preference for sales events. So whether that was the, you know, the cottage site program, because coming up with a better solution was, was just either too messy or too complicated. And, and if you can't generate a sufficient amount of, of revenue from these lands, the, kind of the natural alternative is to sell them. You saw that when, you know, Cougar Island was listed for auction in individual parcels most recently. All of those events foreclosed the public's ability to access these areas. And, you know, we stepped in to try to put, and asked for a moratorium on those types of sales decisions to provide a brief window of time to come up with a better solution. Because, you know, after the debacle surrounding the proposed wedding site, another zoning decision made by the state, it was not a decision of the county and city. They realized that if they couldn't get commercial revenues off of that type of piece of land, it made sense to probably parcel it up and to sell it, removing one of the few remaining public access points to the water. Right now, there are around 12,000 acres of what are called secondary forest. And you would think of these areas as the areas closest to the lake. There are hillsides above Warren Wagon and East Side Drive, especially that are within the view shed of Payette Lake and in the economic impact area of McCall. The, the land board has directed the department under its aesthetic management policy, you know, not to do significant logging on these lands because obviously it's, you know, logging all the hillsides right around the lake significantly changed the character of this community and the value of its homes and, and the aesthetic and beauty for its residents. And so we, we looked at the problem that the state faced and thought if, if the kind of trajectory of year, every year, considering whether to hold something or to sell it, that that type of trajectory projected out over the next several years would see a community around McCall that is parceled into a lot of fenced-off private ownership that would remove what I've always loved about these lands, which are the ability for the public to enjoy them. And so when I heard about this, I, I quit my job and I formed a startup. I hired team members that, every component of this company was, was built to ask this question of how do you take public access that currently exists and needs to both remain and be improved? And then use that feature to create enough value to then pay for preserving that access forever and to committing to it in ways that the state both would not and cannot commit to without violating their, their fiduciary duty to manage these lands in the best interests of the school trust beneficiaries. That was the genesis behind us trying to come up with a better solution before there was no longer a route to do so, before sufficient lands near the lake had been sold off, that a large, more comprehensive solution like this could never, could never pencil or make sense. Our, our concept is one of trying to address McCall's housing needs and its growth needs phased over generations without exacerbating the problems that that type of growth has led to. I mean, we heard for the last hour some, some really interesting comments about why housing is such a challenge in McCall. You know, one reason is that most of the remaining areas for development are sandwiched between the southern end of the lake and the northern end of the airport. And you have, you know, full-time residents competing for housing in the same areas where, you know, three plus, three iron condominiums are also being located. And so when you have land that's being priced at $100,000 to $200,000 an acre, it's sort of no wonder why you can't provide affordable local housing, but you have $200,000 price point. The challenge is that the city of McCall has no pressure release valve that it can throttle over time to address those housing needs. I think the council and its reports on, on its housing report have done a phenomenal job of identifying the problem. And what we're trying to do is provide several different solutions to problems like this and others. But more importantly, we really, I mean, as the elected representatives of this community, while you may not have a vote on this exchange, you certainly need to have a say both at this moment in time and then for every moment going forward. And the way we're able to exercise that jurisdictional authority over these lands that are nearest to you is by having them fall under your jurisdictional authority, removing the decision-making from state level down to the county and city level to approve plans and growth plans that make sense for those that are nearest to the problem and closest to it, and understand the value of the individual acres and how they all might be differently used in ways that folks down in Boise just, you know, at the state level, they could not possibly dedicate that level of attention and care to lands in the same way that this community can. So our, our concept is, you know, we were thinking of how, how do you keep this public access while providing a solution that pays for it? And, and the concept we came up with was trying to do small pockets of development clusters with the guidance and input of the community and city, where rather than doing enormous lots that are fenced and gated, you do home sites on small lots where, you know, rather than provide somebody a 50 or 100-acre backyard that's fenced in, you provide them a small piece of property that you can build a home site on. And then you provide them a 28,000-acre backyard, the same backyard you provide all the existing members of the community. Things that are, you know, are able to then maintain the trail systems. In fact, use the trail systems as a shared community amenity that make the rest of the project succeed. To put together a growth plan that doesn't just work for the next five to 10 years, but lasts for the next 80 years or 100 years. That type of planning ha- has to be in place if McCall is ever going to be able to accommodate all the different challenges that we heard the last hour of people, people voicing. And we think of this as a tremendous opportunity for the community to take the leadership role in assembling that plan. So we talk about, you know, this idea of, of process. The process is how do you empower local groups to participate in a very collaborative, iterative process of assembling this type of, of a very detailed, ever increasingly detailed plan for, for its own, its own future. You know, we talk about some of the benefits. I mean, McCall is, is sort of obviously both a place for full-time residents who can work here that also benefits from the, the visitors that come either as second homeowners or as just recreation activists and, and people who want to spend time on these lands. And, you know, when we think about coming up with solutions that are of this scale, you know, we're, we're talking about how, how do you give high school graduates graduating from McCall the reason and the opportunity to either stay or come back, to live, work and raise a family, be able to earn a wage that can afford housing in an area like this? And right now, those opportunities are preciously few. We believe a solution like this offers multiple solutions to a very, very sticky problem. So I wanted to outline this, this general concept, but I also want to recognize that there's a lot of fear within the community right now. You know, the idea that, you know, a developer wants to come in and develop 28,000 acres of beloved hillside land around McCall is, is not only the opposite of our plan, it is impossible. It is just like the sheer scale of trying to do something like that is absolutely impossible. It is not at all our intention. So I, I recognize the, the fear that some folks have probably felt and voiced in, in kind of hearing the initial details of this plan. And I want you to know that those were the same fears that prompted me to try to come up with a better solution and will keep prompting me to come up with a better solution, you know, over the next half year to a year, to put something in place that this community really can support. So, you know, we're not asking for anybody to support or endorse or to back this type of plan now. We're asking for the inputs to create something that eventually you can support and you would want to see happen. That's the process of what we're trying to pursue. You know, we are, we are trying to have frequent community touchpoints. You know, we're putting together a, a community board where every seat at the table is sort of a key industry or interest group in McCall. We also recognize, though, the city council as McCall's chief elected representatives are the key nexus toward representing McCall's interests as a whole. And, and, you know, we've gotten to meet with some members of city government staff before to, to kind of preview this idea and then to also solicit some, some input. And, and we think that this is an ongoing process. We have empathy for the work that I know something like this will create for the city. But I think for all of us, this is the opportunity to plan the growth of McCall for, for several generations, which is an opportunity that so few cities, towns in the country ever get. And, and so we sort of think of it as an opportunity that, that, that we shouldn't easily pass up. But I wanted to highlight those issues now. We are, we are working with master planning architects to incorporate some of the feedback we've already gotten from members in the community, folks from, you know, the Chamber of Commerce. Again, none of these groups have, have come out in favor or against our plan. These are just people who have voiced very useful contributions that we've already incorporated into what you might call like a working draft plan. That working draft is not a final plan. It's not our concept of what to do. It's a template that we can keep iterating on. We run workshops using so that you're as able to both collect input on a proposal, a proposed template with us in listen-only mode, and then adjust that plan, evolve it and mold it around that input. That's a process that will take time. It will take many months ahead trying to talk with every single full-time resident of this community at all possible through these types of workshops, town halls, through listening events, through meeting with different clubs and associations and interest groups, that really every voice can have a contribution to this project. Whether or not you end up at the end in favor or against it, that, you know, either way, please make your input heard. Generally, that is the process we are trying to follow. My role in the military was built on trust, and I'm conscious that trust takes a lifetime to earn and a moment to, just an instant to lose. My hope is that, that you look at our actions and our willingness to follow this type of process and allow us the opportunity to earn your trust with our actions over time. I'm not asking for it right now. I'm not asking you to give me your trust. I'm just asking for the chance to earn it. Because we have built a business around trying to earn it with our actions and to incorporate feedback and planning into a large community design hand-in-hand with the city that can address all the different needs that you voiced here today that's sustainable and lasts for generations, generations to come. I welcome your questions, and I, I can talk in detail about specific pieces of land. If you wish, I can talk in detail about the business and do a variety of questions. I'm sure there are several. And so I now, I guess, bring it back over to council members for, for your questions, comments and suggestions.
Colak, thank you for covering all of that. We had budgeted approximately 30 minutes. Just so everyone that's on this team's environment understands we're about 15 minutes later than we had talked about. But I would like to make sure you have your entire time. And I, I wrote down some notes that we started this presentation about 6:55 PM. So we have till roughly 7:30, and it is now 7:17. So I'm going to call on the council to see if they have questions, and we can have some dialogue in the next 10 minutes. Thank you. Mike, I'll start with you.
Mike, I think you might be muted. And I'll use the moment to also say that this is the beginning of a series of conversations. This is not the only chance for the council to talk about this problem. This will be the beginning of many, many conversations. So, no problem, Mike. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Oh, no problem. No, I, I mean, by and large, I think some of the questions that, that I want to ask on behalf of our community, just kind of for some clarity. So the first one is, so Trident Holdings LLC was registered. You registered that with the Secretary of State on January 2nd, with you as the agent, then on the 23rd of May, you filed Trident Holdings Management LLC. And then on the 29th of June, you filed for Trident Development 1 LLC, just after the SEC shows you received $300,000 from investors. Is that all correct?
I, 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 I'm not sure what, exactly which websites you're referring to. But yeah, we, we've structured entities to be able to solve this problem. And I am the manager of, of the, the collection of, of kind of legal entities that are helping us to, to solve this problem. Yeah.
So all, basically all new, I mean, this is new. So when people say Trident, Trident isn't some longstanding company that's been around for 50 years with employees and so on and so forth. This is new, right?
Correct. Trident is a startup that we have put together bespoke to solve this problem. Every aspect of, you know, folks and, and the later fundraising we've done after the events you described are to, to solve for this problem. And so it doesn't look like a normal company. It certainly looks nothing like a normal developer. We are trying to tackle a level of conservation work, community engagement work.
Yeah, let me hear that. I just, I don't want to take too much time. I just kind of wanted to ask a couple kind of yes or no questions. So the, the address shown on your Secretary of State entity's shirt, search shows you at 802 West Bannock, P O Box 388, which is the office of your father's law firm. Is that? I mean, and your LinkedIn page shows that your home is New York. So I'm just getting clarity on the, on the native Idahoan and all that. I understand your parents have a, have a place in McCall and that. But are you living in New York or Boise? It seemed confusing to people that we've been speaking to and reading the, some close to 600 comments.
Yeah, no. So I have, I worked for firms that were based in New York, and I insisted in working for them that they let me live here in Idaho. So I've always been a, a full-time Idaho resident for any time that I wasn't either in school or in the military or deployed overseas. That for me has always been a huge priority because this is the community that to me well is, has always been and will always be home.
Right, right. Yeah. So, so like in the documents and on your website and that, you haven't really shown that you have any experience or that I'm seeing or have been able to find or people that, in the community that have reached out to me as a representative on the council, any kind of experience in land use planning or conservation, though you're talking about all these problems and how you can solve them. So, you know, McCall's won many awards in land planning. We, we understand planning. I just wanted to get an idea of kind of, have you done any work in land planning or, or conservation work? Or these sorts of things that you're talking about?
Sure. So I've led teams of developers across the nation. So I've led teams of developers, uh, across the nation. Um, I've, we've done, um, some pretty extensive conservation work as well, uh, in those roles. I, I will say though, that to solve as many different unique challenges as this problem presents requires a variety of different experts. It requires folks who are experts in writing conservation easements as well as experts in undertaking the modest level of development that pays for this type of public access. It requires experts in community engagement. For me to be an expert in all those different fields is impossible. So we've reached out to identify, uh, folks who have that level of experience and expertise so that this is done right. So it's not just one person trying to come up with this plan. It's, it's assembling a process that lets the community really, uh, engage in planning for lands that have never been included in the jurisdiction of this, of this town to be able to use as part of, part of your own land planning.
Okay. So, yeah, just moving along, I mean, again, I'm just trying to, trying to get information out to the public that may or may not have been addressed.
So I wanted to provide full and detailed answers to those questions, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks. Um, but just with the limit on time and it's tough to be pressured on time. But nonetheless, so your mission statement for Trident is, is, uh, to target opportunistic transactions that provide significant creative value to investors. So did I, did I read that correctly?
Uh, yeah. I, I think most businesses try to earn trust of investors by providing a good business. And, and we hope that this is, um, a, a, a great business, but whether it's an okay business, a good business or a great business, uh, we've structured it to be able to solve this problem set of making commitments to the mun- community that can be honored for generations. And that's why we have designed a company around pursuing that. And, and when you look, you know, all of our invest, investors are, are here. They either live in McCall or have significant touchpoints to this area. And the reason they've entrusted us with their, uh, you know, L portions of their life savings and their retirement accounts is because they believe in providing this type of solution to a problem that is this large and messy.
And are you able to disclose any of the people that are these investors that are local?
I mean, I have to go talk with them. I think, you know, for them, they want to be able to, to invest into projects they believe in, uh, without having to run their own, you know, public relations teams every time they go to Albertson's. So I, I think I need to get their permission first.
Yeah. Um, so a couple more. Um, so I, I'm hearing different things from your presentation this evening to what I've read and, um, what I, and again, this relates to questions from our community and what I've read on your website, what I've read through the ladder that you sent out and so forth. And, um, you know, one, for instance, you're saying McCall is growing faster than it can adapt. I'd make an argument that that's not true. And we are not overwhelmed or growing faster than that we can adapt. I also wanted to let you know that to ju- to suggest that the McCall and Valley County approach to land use planning is unguided and unplanned, and I quote you on that, is nothing short of insulting. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. I'm not sure where you're getting your information. So I just wanted to kind of clarify some of those items. Another one is that you want McCall and Valley Counties leaders and communities as your planner, planning partners. I just wanted to say that, you know, you've got to understand that once the state land is no longer state land, if it's that case, that, that would be then subject to Valley County and City McCall, uh, planning processes, land use applications, public hearings, and you would be subject to these codes, not being like somebody who's coming and, um, you know, doing us some kind of favor that you're bringing us into the mix. So the state land board did not put out an RFP. And for those that don't know what that is, it's a request for proposals. You approached them first in individual meetings, then it's a scheduled meeting on June 16th, where each of the land board members disclosed the pri- previous private meetings with you. So I just wanted to give you the heads up that that doesn't make the community here feel particularly warm and fuzzy about transparency and disclosure. So another question is the land up north you want to exchange for Payette Lakefront and valuable habitat, that wasn't a question, that was a statement. Um, the land up north that you want to exchange for Payette Lakefront and valuable habitat and watershed here in Valley County, so the land that you're wanting to exchange is not currently owned by you or one of your newly formed LLCs, is that correct?
So we've been negotiating purchase options on lands in North Idaho that meet the endowments return threshold. Um, these lands provide to the endowment, uh, over $85 million of value to public schools, uh, using a solution that the state has never seen before. The endowment has never been offered, uh, you know, the ability to solve a $100 million budget shortfall amidst these types of budgetary crises related to COVID with, uh, you know, proposals that are, are equally large, um, to provide long-term value to, to meet public school budget needs. So, yeah, you're, you're right that people have not thought of this type of solution before because nobody has looked at trying to make, uh, trying to examine several different problems in tandem and providing a solution that addresses the needs of schools and tries to address and empower the community as well.
All right. Yeah. My last question, then just a quick, quick kind of summarization. Sorry for taking so much time, everyone. Um, so if you want to do a large timber development recreation project, as you noted, um, and to, and as you've pretty clearly stated, to do better than the Wilkes Brothers, why not purchase 28,000 acres of their land and do all the things you said you're going to do for our community?
Yeah, sure. So we have, we have targeted lands that we believe, um, provide significantly greater, uh, returns to public schools than, than the Wilkes Brothers lands. Um, we have targeted lands that both meet the, um, return thresholds that the endowment seeks, but that also encircles or unlocks existing, uh, IDL-owned endowment timberlands that fit a certain demographic of tree that basically backfills the portfolio so they can harvest more of their existing older mature portfolio now. And now at the same time, basically pluses up their ledger of timberlands so that they can invest more in higher returning equities. Finding lands that meet all of those different characteristics to benefit schools is not an easy task. It's something we've, we've been working extraordinarily hard to undertake, um, partly because it's the right thing to do and partly because, because that's how you solve these types of budgetary crises for, for public school systems over the long term.
Okay. So then, I guess for the last comment, just because again, this is, and we appreciate you taking the time because again, it's the, you know, our public, um, has certainly strong feelings, um, you know, and wants to hear from you and wants to hear, um, have their, have their voices be heard. So I just want to encourage, what's that?
This won't be the only opportunity either. This is again, a long iterative process of communication and feedback gathering.
Yeah. So for the public listening, I just really want to encourage everybody to do your due diligence on what, what, what the issues or the real issues are here. There will always be the, those who will, in my opinion, try to sell a bill with goods for their self-interest. And if one goes away, there will be others. What I want to thank Alec Williams here, thank you Alex for doing this, is that I think that in, I think in the words of one, you've kind of kicked the hornets in us here. And on the other hand, you've galvanized our community into action that we're going to engage with IDL to find a solution to preserve and protect open space around the lake and up into the hills around our home while adhering to the Department of Land's constitutional mandate. Everybody that's listening, and I know there are a lot, let's keep our eye on the ball. Let's find a solution with the Department of Lands. Let's work together to protect access, our watershed and our home. And thank you, Alex, for helping instigate this. I'm through, Bob. Thank you.
Those are exactly the goals that I share and, and have been structuring a company to solve for. So I think that the fears you, you highlight that the community has voiced is exactly the same things that we are hoping to use this type of structure to provide. Uh, and again, I'm not asking for, for your trust, I'm asking for the opportunity to earn it with our actions over time. So thank you for your questions.
Good questions and good discussion. We're going to go to Tom. Tom Sowers.
All right. Uh, thanks Alec, uh, and thanks Bob and, and Mike. Thank you for bringing up a lot of great points. Yeah, I think, uh, I, I think Mike said a lot of what I had planned on saying. Uh, I, I guess for Alec, uh, what, what gave you the idea that there's a problem, uh, with the state land around Payette Lake?
Cause, cause we examined the endowment's classification of secondary forests in this area. We looked at what they're, uh, you know, using publicly available information and asking questions of department staff around challenges and getting revenue on lands that they cannot or do not log. Um, it's, it's sort of obvious that you incur these types of administering costs maintaining these areas. And if you can't get commercial, you know, revenues from them, you're forced into the same decision that the endowment and the state has been forced into every time they face this choice in McCall, which is if we can't come up with a better solution that honors the long-term economic returns to the endowment, then selling lands is the only alternative strategy that makes sense. And I think we've seen that play out. Look to people's actions to, to understand their intentions or at least their options. And I think you'll understand that the state does, does not have a lot of great options in these types of things. And, and we wanted to help put together a solution where, you know, we really do approach you as a council and the other members of this community as partners to put together a plan that, that, that does meet all these needs.
Okay. Uh, is, is there any particular community that you're kind of modeling this plan after?
Uh, nationwide, this is a, I mean, very few communities have this unique problem of endowment lands with state commitments to meet returns surrounding water features in communities that have evolved from, uh, you know, logging towns 100 years ago to a, a mixed-use, uh, town today. Um, so we've tried to structure a company that is equally unique in its ability to solve for that type of, type of problem. Now, there are, um, you know, communities around the country that have, you know, prioritized conservation and, and the one advantage of a 28,000 acre problem and solution is that it has enough size and scale to honor and to undertake, you know, the largest conservation project ever undertaken in the state of Idaho financed entirely through private dollars in ways that keep the public's ability to access these lands in place forever and commit to doing so in ways that the state cannot. So we thought that that was a very, uh, unique, uh, opportunity to provide something like that to a, you know, to a community. At first, that was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be involved in something that can put together a long-term, multi-generational solution that works.
Okay. Um, I don't know. I, I think just it's, uh, yeah, you, you've, you've brought a lot of, uh, a lot of questions for our community. So I, I think, uh, that's all the questions I got for this time. Thanks, Alec.
Thank you, Tom. Melanie, perhaps you have some new questions or some other thoughts?
Yes, sir, I do. Um, number one, Alec, I would really, really appreciate your source of information on, um, how this particular land is losing $276,000 a year.
So, so, uh, again, we think it's probably, um, uh, larger than that, but let me talk about the basic assumptions. So, uh, you know, you essentially take the, what you know as the per acre administrative costs for lands statewide, um, with the published, uh, data point, and then you apply it to areas that are considered secondary forest within the view shed of Payette Lake and within the economic imperatives of McCall that the land board's aesthetic management policy dictates not to log. And so you know that, you know, your revenue sources on those lands are extremely limited. So that was the cost we ascribed just to the, only to the acres that we knew were within that, you know, view shed area and economic imperatives.
Okay. Well, I have this little document here that I received today from the, uh, Payette Lake supervisory area. And just for the endowment leasing, which is only one of, you know, a couple of different sources of revenue, over the last year and a half, the average annual net revenue after management expect, in expenses was $545,021. So, so that's why I find this an important question because you're putting out figures there that you're not telling us exactly where you're getting them and, and we need to corroborate all of this information.
So all of this material is submitted or put together by Smart Forest Solutions. These are a team of expert foresters and economists. These are in fact the ex, many of the same experts that IDL itself looks to construct its own forest management plans, uh, and they go to them as consultants. So these are people who really do know what they're talking about. I'm not a forester by training. Um, I have to ask, you know, is the revenue that's being generated on the whole, or is it being generated on, on the areas where you know we're losing money? But I think for us, the cost of this is not just the administrative costs, uh, IDL has in administering these, these specific lands. The cost is that it's an $85 million opportunity cost that schools otherwise have to forego to avoid coming up with a solution like this. I mean, it's an $85 million cost. It's not just, you know, the annual administrative costs of staffers for IDL in McCall. It's the opportunity cost that schools are avoiding larger solutions like this.
Okay. Well, I, I, I really feel like in the future, we're going to need something a little more solid than, we need a source.
Sources are in those.
I also have some problems with the $7.6 million after the $276,000 loss in valuation. I want to know who appraised it and I'd like to know what their qualifications in appraising this type of land would be.
So explain, so just so I understand your question, you, you referenced a figure and I, I, I'm looking at it right now so if you can say that question.
So, so in, in some of your materials, you have noted that this land, um, is valued at approximately $7.9 million less the $276 that, you know, that, that it loses basically. So, um, obviously that valuation has to come from somewhere and, and I'm, I'm asking you where that valuation is coming from.
So from our materials, we, we threw an initial value guess out at around $35 million. There's an enormous range. So when the state undertakes exchanges, they do them on the basis of value for value. So they look at, they do an independent appraisal of the value of the lands in around McCall. And then they do an independent appraisal of the timberlands that are being used in exchange. They, uh, basically adjust the amount of lands that are being exchanged, uh, elsewhere in the state, uh, to be roughly valued, uh, uh, it's value for value, um, before you're saying, uh, search. So, um, you know, what we've done, as we've said, you know, for, uh, these are ballpark figures, but basically for each value, each dollar of appraised value and of sending McCall, uh, two to two and a half dollars of value is created from doing the exchange for the endowment. And that's because the lands we're providing, uh, include, you know, things that unlock, uh, access-constrained existing IDL-owned parcels. They, uh, provide this middle demogra- age demographic of trees. Um, they provide these other sources of value besides just being profitable timberlands elsewhere in Idaho, uh, in the first place. And so, um, you know, we tried to be very conservative in coming up with this $85 million uh, investment benefit for, for public schools because if you increase, uh, if you think we're being too conservative and you increase the value, um, that an appraiser puts on the lands around McCall, then, you know, you, there's this same multiplier effect and the actual attractiveness of an exchange increases as well.
Okay. And I think Mike and Tom have asked some of the other questions that I have, so I'll let you go. But one, one note I would like to make is that I would caution you in using, as a recent board member of the McCall Chamber of Commerce, recently departed, um, I would caution you in throwing their name around if they have not, you know, specifically said that that's okay.
Fair enough. I, I, we, we found them to be a tremendous source of input, but again, we've not been endorsed or supported, uh, you know, by any group and we haven't been asking for it. We've just been asking for input and feedback.
Thank you, Alec. Thank you, Melanie. Uh, Colby, you're next.
All right. We haven't fun yet. Um, I kind of want to start with some fundamental stuff, you know, we, you talk a lot about, uh, funding public education. You feel like, um, funding from Department of Lands, uh, is an efficient way to fund our underfunded schools in the state?
So it's, it's not a sufficient way. Um, it is certainly a helpful way. Um, so the state's education endowment is composed both of things like timberlands, but also, um, other investments and things like equity and debt instruments and, um, you know, other types of holdings that you might normally associate with things like stocks. So the, the challenge is that, uh, you know, stocks are, are pretty volatile. Um, and the timber holdings the state has are, are not correlated with volatility of stocks. So having a balanced portfolio that includes So having a balanced portfolio that includes several different asset types that include timber um, is a way to sort of, uh, reduce some of that volatility and be sure that you can meet the budget commitments of providing schools in both good times and bad.
So just just to let everyone know, how much, how much does the state generate for schools in this way annually?
From its total endowment?
Yes.
Uh, I would have to go back and read the reports they published. I don't, I don't have that number top of mind.
Okay. Are you, uh, familiar with the current K-12 initiative that they're trying to get on the ballot?
Um, a a little bit that I've heard about, but, um, is it?
It would include, uh, taxing people that make more than $250,000 a year and, uh, corporations to generate roughly $170 million a year. I guess since you quit your job, you probably don't worry about it.
Nor have I. I I grew up a middle-class kid and was a public school student. And so I was a beneficiary of a lot of these, uh, endowment lands, um, returns as well myself.
Sure. Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, you know, yeah, our public education is woefully underfunded here in the state of Idaho. Um, but they, there may be some other solutions. And I think that that you may have, uh, the ability to really pursue passions and in funding public education in in other ways. So that's, that's one problem that that can be solved, uh, independent of the land around McCall. So then, on the next one, um, you know, you've, you've acknowledged that that our economy has has changed over the years from a resource extraction economy, um, into, yeah, a a diverse, not overly diverse economy, heavily reliant on tourism, really. But with that change, would you agree that the mandate for IDL operations is outdated and probably antiquated in in current times?
I mean, as their, their mandate is a constitutional mandate. It was the deal struck with the federal government in order to provide a source of funding for public schools. So it's not really something IDL gets a choice in. It's certainly not something I get a choice in. Um, it's, that's a constitutional requirement that was, you know, negotiated between the state and the federal government 100 years ago.
But it's, uh, someone's enough will may be able to, uh, open that up and make some changes, correct?
Um, I, I think that would be a large undertaking. Um, I I think the better question is to ask, how do you provide large-scale funding to public schools um, in the kind of $100 million chunk range that this offers while still providing a place for people to live on, enjoy, hike in, uh, ski on lands like this? That's why we tried to put a solution together that both made these lands, you know, public forever, uh, but also did right by the school systems that these lands were initially bestowed to fund.
Sure, I I I understand your your logic there. I'm sure that a lot of others are not really supportive of that, but I'm sure nor they're. I guess the, uh, follow-up question, um, so that if, uh, you know, you really truly do care about access to public lands, we've, uh, recently lost access to a lot of land, as you know. As you say, you don't want to be like these Wilkes Brothers. And I think Mike asked asked this question earlier, but I'm going to ask it again. Why don't you guys just buy some Wilkes Brothers property and open that back up to public access and and build some houses out there? That way you don't have to deal with the timber sales and all the nonsense. You can just buy your land.
Colby, if I, if I had $100 million to do that, or, you know, I would. I I don't, like, I, I, I'm not wealthy. I, like, I, uh, I poured my life savings into just trying to get a startup that solves these types of problems off the ground. And we're trying to go to investors who, uh, care about McCall and understand the balance and are willing to essentially give capital to this type of project because they believe in it. Uh, and but give amounts that is that is going to be requiring a dollar figure that's just far, far greater than charity alone can provide. I I don't, um, I mean, the scope of this type of problem set for the state is a scope that very like quickly exceeds the ability of 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 charities in the area and in the state to to provide for. And so I was trying to figure out a solution that could use private sector funds to keep in place these commitments for access and conservation, uh, in in ways that could solve a problem at this type of scale. And this was the only way I saw to do it.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess that, um, you know, we look at, uh, what it would take to, uh, you know, make the state whole, as it were, in our little section of heaven we're looking at here. Let's see, the the $23 an acre, uh, minimum requirement for their, and they're for their property. What can you, can you tell us about that $23 number per acre?
Uh, that's, that's just the, uh, expense, the average statewide expense per acre IDL, uh, incurs administering timberlands. So that's from their their public materials.
About it. So we could, we could, we could potentially sponsor an acre for 23 bucks or more?
Uh, well, no, because again, you have to be able to meet the return targets, uh, that that the endowment has set for the performance of its holdings. Um, so that's why you get to lar, numbers that are as large as $85 million of, uh, of the opportunity cost of not doing something like this and a benefit to to public schools. It's it's quite a large figure very quickly.
Yeah, for sure. Um, it is a large figure. Um, so what's, uh, what's the rate of return to make your, uh, investors happy?
Uh, we didn't insist on any rate of return for them. They believe in this project. They invested for reasons that include, uh, that include, they think it will be a good business, but but they invested primarily because, you know, they trust me and they think that this is a plan that can work for maintaining public access and conservation forever. And and there's a variety of different objectives that that they wanted to to take the additional risk to support. Um, and that's why we've been incredibly, um, you know, selective with making sure that anybody who wants to try to help in this project understands that that's the goal. And they have to be on board with that type of vision first and foremost.
So would would your investors be willing to go and try to reopen some lands that have been gated off? Maybe achieve some of the the same goals in, uh, not not your funding public education goals and all the, the the antiquated mandate from, for, uh, IDL? But would they be interested in 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 opening up lands that are currently gated off?
Yeah, again, I think the challenge here is that, um, you know, they're they're entrusting me with their life savings and their retirement accounts and and, uh, and, you know, they, they're hoping to be able to recover that eventually because that's money they they need. Um, and so to sort of ask them to make those types of donations to to purchase and then donate as charity, um, you know, all the Wilkes Brothers lands is just like, it, that, that that doesn't seem like it's like a possible solution. Uh, I think it's a very noble idea, though, and I think it's a great idea. It's just, again, I think the scope of these types of of challenges, um, quickly exceed the ability of charities alone. And so we wanted to try to use private sector funding to provide that same outcome for the community, to provide that same public access, to provide that same conservation that would otherwise, you know, we would hope charity would be able to provide. But but this is a way to do it, um, still. Uh, and it's a way that I think makes sense and can scale up to solve this, uh, uh, problem as big as this one is.
So, Colby, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, interrupt just for a minute. I'm not gonna cut you guys off, but, we are scheduled to end at about 10:00 PM. We're 40 minutes over our budgeted time in total, not because of this topic, but just cumulatively. So I would ask, um, the two of you to maybe take five minutes to bring this to a close because there are items that we're going to have to discuss tonight and make decisions before we adjourn at 11:00 PM.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. I'll, I'll work on wrapping it up here. And, uh, as a, an elected official, I would gladly sit here and 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 be an elected official till two or three in the morning, until we get all the questions answered. Like, we can throw away the clock right now. I know we got plenty of stuff left to do, but guess what? It's, we can, we can sit here and talk. Sorry for being rude.
Well, that's not rude. Go ahead and proceed. I just wanted to make the group aware of it. You're fine.
Yeah, and I'm trying to be mindful of the time and I'm, I apologize for going over. Um, so, uh, I guess a few more questions. Who, who are your key members on Trident? Not your investors, but those involved.
Yeah, so, uh, so I'm the only partner and we've hired a variety of staff, all of which are in Idaho, um, who have the the key experiential backgrounds in in several different subject domains, right? This includes, uh, you know, uh, environmental law, the ability to write conservation needsments, the ability to do community engagement, uh, you know, some, uh, you know, most every member of this team is multi-generational in Idaho and they're all in Idaho because they care about this project and they believe in it. Uh, it's not just that it's a job. It's that they, they think this is a good solution and they want to work to to help provide it. Um, so, you know, there's, there's a sort of a variety of folks in in several different roles, all of who have, you know, incredibly talented with real subject matter expertise, expertise in their specific domains.
Um, how many staff do you have total?
Uh, we have, we're working with about a dozen or so people in total, um, uh, that are kind of spread between McCall and and then some folks whose, uh, work is primarily, um, down in Boise because it's just more related to some of the state issues that are, that take place out of there.
Do you have any lobbyists on board?
Uh, we do. We, um, we hired a lobbyist who understands how land exchanges work. And, uh, again, we wanted to hire people who had tremendous amount of experience, uh, getting this done and getting this done right. And so being able to navigate a process as complex as this with real expertise was important.
Do you feel like any of them have an altruistic bone in their body?
I I do. I I've only hi, uh, my entire career has been working on high-performance teams of people who care deeply about what they're working on. Um, we have replicated that exact same concept in this business. I mean, that characterizes my entire time in the military, is only working alongside people who are passionate about what they're doing and aren't just doing it for the job, but really care. And that's exactly what we looked for in the team that we've assembled to take on this project because you have to care. You have to care to be able to put this many different objectives on the table and to provide a solution that's as comprehensive and obviously as politically challenging and fraught and and scary as as something like this is. And so you have to find people who have that level of dedication.
Sure. Yeah, I agree. Um, it might help to, uh, have a little about us page and let us know who's who's working on your team there.
Keep adding more and more details as as quickly as you can.
Great, great. And finally, um, we got some promises in here about funding stuff like rec centers and et cetera. Um, library, all things that are really near-term, uh, projects are, how how quickly are you anticipating generating a enough revenue that you can, you can also help support, uh, facility development?
Our hope, our hope isn't that you just use revenues to do that. It's that you use the investment you raise around constructing this plan to pay for things that make the community better. Um, you know, for example, you know, local housing is a great, you know, a great, a great example. When when you have, you provide to the city 28,000 acres to choose from, you know, help, help me figure out where best to locate local housing options. And then, you know, we'll figure out also how to to partner with everyone in in financing and building those types of projects. Um, because I think for us, these are part and parcel of how you create a a cohesive, sustainable community, um, not just this year and for the next few years for these sort of near-term projects, but for the next several generations.
Sure. I, I mean, I follow your logic on all this and I appreciate you answering these questions. And I'll, uh, just have one more and be done. Um, would you, uh, consider just giving the state 80 to the city should all of this go through?
I I think the dying hard 80 is a phenomenal piece of lands to incorporate into the city's objectives because it's right at the center of town. It's across the street from the schools. Our thinking is that's one of the easiest pieces to use to satisfy, uh, you know, larger community needs that have nothing to do with the larger project. So absolutely, we we figure out what, you know, what your direction is for pieces like that that are critical to building community.
Okay. I appreciate the time and, uh, thank you for letting me go over there, Mayor. Um, and yeah, I'm done.
You're, you're welcome, Alex. Thank you very much. Really appreciate everybody's, uh, candor and some very good questions. And I think it helped, helped a lot to have some dialogue tonight.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. We'll, we'll keep having it going forward. This is not a, um, again, this is not a short-term decision. This is a long-term iterative process to come up with a solution that that people would want to see happen. So we hope to, again, earn your trust through that type of action and and coming up with a solution that's as large as as we hope.
Well, thanks again, Alec. Um, Council, thank you for some thoughtful questions and dialogue. Our next item is Agenda Bill 20-196. It's an approval or a request, excuse me, for approval of a resolution adopting the McCall and Delicious motion advancing the city's urban agricultural goals as a planning document. And this is an action item. Um, Michelle, are you going to help us with this?
I am. Um, good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, I was hoping we've got actually two resolutions in front of you this evening. And I was wondering if we couldn't first just look at the climate action planning, uh, document and do that presentation first because it's a little broader and overarching. So that was the order we had intended.
That would be fine. Take it away.
Okay, so as you, as you remember from your last meeting, um, you met our two MOS interns. Uh, fortunately, we had that opportunity. They, uh, we received a grant and they spent six weeks with us, um, working really hard, putting together these final projects. They're technically done, but, um, this evening, they're going to provide a presentation of their final reports. Um, and then with that, you can see there's a resolution to adopt, um, both reports, um, as planning documents. So first, I'd like to introduce Anna, who's going to give you the overview on the, on the, um, framework for the climate action planning and the greenhouse gas, uh, miss, excuse me, emission inventories. Um, so hopefully she's still on the line. Oh, there you are, Anna. Great. So take it away.
Yes, I'm still here. Uh, I will share my screen if that's all right.
You bet.
Right. I'm very excited. Thank you, Ma, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us again. Um, yeah, it's exciting to see how many people are on the line just to hear about, uh, our internships, I'm sure. Uh, so, but all joking aside, uh, it's inspiring to see how much passion is in this community and the thoughtfulness of this council. And I feel very grateful to have done this work alongside Michelle and Casey. Um, and so I'll be summarizing that work for you tonight, uh, expanding on what I presented on a couple of weeks ago. And of course, for more details about everything I'll talk about tonight uh, can be found in the reports that are part of the agenda packet that you all have. Uh, and so for anyone not here, Uh, and so for anyone not here last time, I'm presenting about an internship tonight, a six-weeks internship that I completed as part of my graduate program at the McCall Outdoor Science School. This internship came about, um, in collaboration with the city, uh, back in the spring as part of a seminar class that I was a part of. We started collecting data, uh, to see if we could put together a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the city of McCall. So essentially trying to basically calculate a carbon footprint for the city. Uh, and with that, we were also partnering with ICLI, which is a nonprofit entity, um, ICLI Local Governments for Sustainability, that helps cities do this sort of work, putting together emissions, inventories, and climate action plans and such. And so in this seminar, this project closely aligned with the mission of Moss to explore the socio-ecological systems of a place. Um, we sent out letters trying to collect this data. Um, of course, the pandemic hit just as we were getting going. Um, so my internship came about to further that data collection, continue to collect data and expand on some of the research. Um, and as I stated last time I was with you all, I showed you this statistic. Cities consume seventy-eight percent of the world's energy and produce more than sixty percent of greenhouse gas emissions. Um, so like I've said previously, I believe, and I believe the council believes that climate change is a critically important issue, and unfortunately, it will affect McCall at the local level. But I believe this community can be a leader in the movement for sustainability and climate resilience. And so tonight, I'll briefly go into, like I said, what's outlined in my reports. The first of which is the draft greenhouse gas emissions inventory for that baseline year 2018. Again, twenty eighteen, just because data for 2019 might not have all been, uh, put in people's records books, books yet. So twenty eighteen was chosen as the year. And so I went about my internship, collecting data, emailing and calling many people, trying to get some numbers, um, on different things like vehicle miles traveled, propane sales, gas sales, et cetera. And, uh, put it all into that ICLI software that I referenced last time called ClearPath. And I'll talk about the results. And again, just briefly reviewing, we start at the big scale, right? The community emissions of, of the city and McCall area of impact. So that includes things such as transportation, energy, uh, residential, commercial, and industrial, solid waste. And then within that, we have the subset of local government operations. So that's anything that the city is responsible for, like city facilities, like the library, um, the vehicle fleet, employee commutes, and water treatment and distribution. So we'll start with the local government operations first. Um, this data set is pretty complete. Huge thanks to Linda and Jody in the finance department for helping me pull many invoices to compile this data. Um, the biggest sector that I found was the, from the water treatment facilities. Um, the biggest was the water treatment plant, electricity usage. So that was just pulled from Idaho power bills from 2018. So that's kilowatt hours, um, that followed by the Legacy Park Water Treatment Building, and then the propane usage at the water treatment plant. That was followed by the city building and facility sector. Um, the largest of that was the golf course pump electricity. Again, that was just, uh, Idaho power bills that I pulled, and then the Reed Lane Golf Course electricity usage, and then Public Works Office propane, City Hall electricity. Um, and just a note on the measurements that are used here. So, uh, CO2E metric tons, that's just a measurement, uh, used to convey the impact of greenhouse gas emissions. It doesn't mean that all the emissions are carbon dioxide, obviously. Um, it's just used in that to make things a little bit, uh, smoother and easy to read. But CO2 is carbon dioxide emissions. Right, and then so going down the list, uh, you can see the next biggest one is going to be, uh, the vehicle fleet. And that was pulled from just Chevron bills, um, and that is broken down by department, um, in the document that I submitted. And I believe the biggest one from that was just Public Works Diesel, followed by the Police Department gasoline usage, which is, uh, pretty standard generally from what I found, given that they're operating at twenty-four-seven. And then down from that, we have, let's see, streetlights, um, and employee commuting. And then the very smallest one, um, this is the one that's not quite accurate. I know, uh, just simply because I wasn't able to get data for it, was the solid waste. So because of the city's agreement with Lake Shore Disposal, uh, neither the city or Lake Shore keeps track of, uh, how often the dumpsters are dumped essentially at city facilities. Um, that's something that could easily be remedied, and I put some suggestions in my report. For instance, the city of Moscow, uh, they simply measured their dumpsters, calculated the annual yardage that was used by estimating, um, that the dumpsters were full every time that they were dumped, and just doing that simple math. And then for the community-wide emissions, this data set is definitely not quite complete. More data will needed to be collected to get a better picture of these things. Um, but from what I found, I was able to collect some data. Residential energy is the biggest sector, uh, from what I found so far. And that data was provided by Idaho Power. And then following that was transportation. And that was calculated by simply pulling, um, Idaho Department of Transportation numbers on annual, uh, daily traffic counts essentially, and doing a calculation off of that. Um, then that's followed by commercial energy. Uh, and then I'll just say with those energy sectors, I contacted all three, uh, propane providers in the city that I was aware of, um, multiple times and was never able to get any data from them. So that's another part that would go into the energy sectors when that data is able to be collected. Um, and then again, solid waste, um, was a little bit of a tricky one. Um, spoke with Lake Shore, and they do not keep track at the city level of, uh, how much waste is collected. They keep track of things at the bigger, like county level. So they were able to provide me that data, and from that, I was able to just, based on McCall's percentage of population within Valley County, this is a rough estimate. Um, further work could probably be done to refine that. Uh, and then water, uh, that was data pulled from Payette Lakes Sewer and Recreation, energy used to treat the water there. And so that's all just basically a rough outline of what I found so far with my data collection. And where the city goes from here is outlined in my second document, McCall's Framework for Climate Action Planning. And so this document is essentially kind of, uh, two things. It's recommendations that are based on research done into, uh, other cities' climate action plans and greenhouse gas emissions inventories, as well as reviewing McCall's own comprehensive plan, which came out in 2018. And so to really get going, I'd recommend following the milestone framework created by ICLI to guide this process. McCall is, of course, in milestone one. It's already got the leadership commitment, thankfully. And, um, we're going to continue to inventory emissions, hopefully, and then be able to move on to the rest. So then establishing some targets to reduce those emissions. Those emission, those goals will be codified in a climate action plan, then implemented, and then finally monitored and evaluated. And so I'll just quickly summarize what I see as the steps for each of the milestones. And again, this is in the report, and I just broke things down by the milestone and what I see the city, um, as, uh, needing to do to take these steps. So the first thing I'd recommend would be to assign a coordinator or point of contact. We all, um, just to kind of intuitively know that nothing gets done if you don't know who's responsible for it, right? So for instance, the city of Boise has an environmental specialist who does this work for the city. She's done several local government operations-scale greenhouse gas emissions inventories. Uh, similarly, the city of Moscow has an environmental educator who does this work along with other job duties. Um, she started out as an AmeriCorps volunteer and then was brought on part-time and then full-time. Um, so a very gradual working up. I'd also recommend continuing to work with ICLI and consider becoming a full-time member. I know they've, uh, pitched becoming a member to Michelle before. I believe it's, uh, six hundred dollars a year to be a member. Uh, but that gives you full access to their ClearPath software, which helps you do the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, uh, calculations, so you don't have to do them yourself. Um, and then also you get assigned a specific, uh, staff member to be your technical assistant. Otherwise, you're just kind of waiting for them to have the, uh, good graces and time to help you out. And then third, exploring the option of working at the county level to complete data collection. Um, this was an idea that came to my head when I talked to people in Blaine County. They are currently, all the cities in Blaine County are currently working on completing greenhouse gas emissions inventories, and they're all working together. They hired six interns, one for each city, and they're collecting data and working together with, in conjunction with, um, some planners at the city and the county level, as well as some nonprofit help, just facilitating, uh, communication and such. And so this could be helpful for McCall to potentially consider too, just because like I previously mentioned, getting things, uh, data like from Lake Shore Disposal, who don't keep track of it at the city level, you're already collecting regional data, so might as well share the data love. And then milestone two, when you're establishing those targets, I'd recommend picking a focus. So for instance, would the city like to tackle everything all at once? The local government and community emissions and reduce both, or just focus on one? A lot of cities just start with the local government operations and find that's easier. And additionally, it just shows that the city is really committed and wants to be a leader and, um, yeah, lead the way. And then focusing on sectors within that, so specific sectors, you could just focus on the largest emitters, like energy or transportation. And then also within that, I think it'd be important to note that qualitative goals are valid as well. Like maybe the city wants to work on promoting its green business certification program or starting a campaign to encourage visitors and residents to shop at the farmer's market and therefore reduce their carbon footprint of their food. Um, so things like that could be included in the goals as well. Um, but the goals should of course be reasonable but ambitious. Um, and continuing to consult with ICLI to create a timeframe will be helpful. As I said, they have a lot of experience in this. Um, and but cities in my, uh, research generally set about a three-to-ten-year timeframe in which they wanted to reduce their emissions by some sort of percentage. And some examples of those are considered in the, are, uh, listed in the report. And then developing the climate action plan. Establishing a committee is really key for this. And educational and recreational partnerships could be leveraged at this step to both convey and collect information during the process. Um, I can really see this in the McCall community being implemented by someplace like Moss, uh, or even high school students going out and collecting interviews of, or other data, um, or help running events to promote the climate action plan. And then, of course, the committee, which is made up of city staff and community members. Um, their job is really to narrow the scope, uh, so listen to citizens, see what's most important to them, and then decide where to go from there. Um, I particularly liked the city of Aspen's model, as we'll read about in my report, of starting really big and listing every action the city could take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and then choosing from that list based on certain criteria. So that's refining the vision using the greenhouse gas inventories. And then from there, you will be able to create a draft climate action plan to propose to city council for approval. And then implementation. If you have a good plan, it should be easy to implement, right? Um, as long as you've answered the questions of who will do the work, who will be responsible, and how will it be funded? I go into this a little bit in my report. Um, and then, of course, continuing to solicit feedback and adapt and reviewing the timeline. Um, and just a note on who's going to do the work. If you're working at the local government operations level, this was as simple in some of the cities as just deciding who in each department is going to keep everyone on track. Um, I see this as being much like the table in the comprehensive, the McCall Comprehensive Plan, where specific projects are listed with timeframes and potentially just adding, um, the department that's associated along with it. And then finally, monitoring and evaluating. So conducting a second greenhouse gas emissions inventory to see how things have gone, reviewing the progress so far, and then updating the target. So using the, uh, ClearPath software and having the coordinator and the committee review the update and update the goals as necessary, and then of course communicating to the public on the progress so far. So just very broadly in summary, where I see the city at right now is really well-positioned to, uh, get going on this if they so choose. And, uh, continuing to move this work forward will be greatly enhanced by selecting a point person or some sort of coordinator. Like I said, most other cities have someone who does this work on city staff, is either all or part of their job. Um, I know that's easier said than done. Um, some cities may pay an outside consulting form to help move the process forward. And then also just be important to empower staff to really refine the local government operations data set. Like I said, that data is pretty complete. Um, but areas like solid waste, cause you could use some more research done. Um, so just starting a conversation and completing the data internally for municipal operations would be a good place to start. And then once that municipal data is collecting, setting some reduction targets on it, focusing on the sectors which are contributing the most to emissions, um, continuing to collect community-wide data, and then really leveraging those partnerships, continuing to work with ICLI for technical support, as they are the experts in this kind of thing, and also continuing to partner with Moss for data collection. And then finally, just opening that dialogue and deciding how to facilitate, uh, it on this topic and community input in the form of an advisory board or committee made up of staff and community stakeholders will really be key in guiding the direction of a future climate action plan, much like they were in the, um, creation of the Comprehensive Plan. And so with that, I just wanna say thank you so much to everyone at the city, uh, for helping me out. Um, thank you to my professors and the staff at the McCall Outdoor Science School, all the community members who provided the data, and our partnerships at ICLI. As a student, uh, living in the time of a pandemic where so much is up in the air, it was really lovely to have this internship to ground me and to continue furthering my learning and, uh, to, uh, be, uh, grounded in all the data that was coming at me. And, uh, it was a great experience.
Well, and great work. Thank you, Anna. Really appreciate it. So question for Michelle. Um, I noticed before we go into questions from council, um, the recommended action is to adopt Resolution twenty-dash-thirteen. And then the second recommended action is to provide any direction to staff on next steps. Will you be able to give us a little hint or advice on maybe what our next steps should be?
Uh, well, we wanted to provide an opportunity for the council to be able to discuss some of the content and recommendations. And if there are particular things, um, that you think are compelling within the report, you could give us direction. Um, so for example, you know, some of it, some of it I think you've been talking about already is an interest in creating an actual climate action plan. Um, and so, you know, if you have specific, um, ideas that came out of the work that Anna did, uh, we just wanted to hear those, so we know, um, how to keep moving this, this work forward.
Okay. So would you suggest we have a little open discussion on both those action items first? And then we'll take some motions to try to pin those down? What's your thoughts?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
All right. Um, Mike, I'll start with you.
Um, I just wanted to say, I, I very much appreciate everything that Anna's done, and it's a, um, I don't have any, um, questions at this point in time, Bob, but I do really appreciate everything you've done, Anna. It looks great.
Thank you, Mike. Tom?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions at this time. Good work, Anna.
Melanie?
I have a couple of questions, but I, you know, I, I hesitate because I'm not very educated in this particular field. But I'm wondering if, you know, a couple of even simple things, such as the fact that we're discussing taking the highway out of the middle of town, could reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in the city of McCall, um, substantially, just with less traffic? Um, and then, you know, if we took action with some of the, the trucks that go through town that, you know, release the thick dark smoke, I don't know what that's called, but, um, you know, just a couple of things. Is there such a thing as a, like a checklist, that we can go down and really, you know, start checking off the things that would make a difference? I mean, it's a, it's a little overwhelming to me to think about how you could create a fifteen percent less greenhouse gas emission without, like, seeing some of the, the, the items that really make the difference, I guess? Sorry, that's a complicated question, but Hannah, if you could speak to that, or Michelle, if you could speak to that, that would help a little bit, and great, fantastic job, by the way. Anna, if you could speak to that, or Michelle, if you could speak to that, that would help a little bit. And great, fantastic job, by the way.
Thank you. Yeah, I think of course, the climate action plan is a great first step, right? I would say just specifically with the transportation piece, of course, moving the lane around the city isn't going to stop those emissions from happening, unfortunately. But that is, but that is something that could be looked into. Someone with a lot more technical expertise than I have could probably answer that better for you. I think, like I said, a lot of cities, they just start big and then start narrowing it in because a lot of things, as you start discussing them, you'll find just aren't feasible or there isn't the political or communal will to enact things. So just really that brainstorming process is going to be helpful. I think a good place to start is once you have that complete inventory, looking at where those biggest sectors are and where the specific contributors within each sector are. And then having conversations with either those departments, if it's at the local level or the certain businesses or stakeholders at the community level is a good place to start. So focusing on those, the biggest sectors.
Thank you.
Colby?
Yeah, thanks, Anna. This is, this is great. We, this is probably the most interesting city council packet we've had in a while. There's lots, lots of fun reading to be had. So I, you know, I guess to kind of address what Mayor Bob was talking about is what, you know, what sort of guidance should we give staff? And I think that, you know, this, this document that you've produced, Anna, is a great framework. And a great starting place for us to come up with a climate action plan. It really, it really helps lay out kind of the steps. I like the, how you broke the milestones down. And I, I think that, I mean, obviously this warrants more discussion from, from the council. Because I think one of the, one of the main things that you pointed out is that it takes, it takes a committed person to keep this in motion, which I think in itself is probably a discussion that we would have to have of how, how can we make that happen? And I, I think that, you know, you also brought up the potential like AmeriCorps volunteers. You know, I, I think that it would be helpful to have, you know, maybe some, some information on, on what steps we might be able to take to start getting moving on something like this, you know, between, you know, between what you've presented and what Casey is going to present. I mean, reality is that lends itself to like another full-time staff person and that's kind of a major, major deal. So I mean, I, I think that we have some kind of, some big things to talk about with that. And I, you know, I, with this, you've put in so, a bunch of work into getting this together and definitely during a challenging time and a short amount of time to gather a lot of big information. Yeah, we need, we need, I feel like we need to keep moving forward on this. And I'd like to try to figure out a way that we, we can, we can one way or another, keep moving forward on it.
So Colby and Michelle, help me out a little bit. And Anna, I think, I think the, I can speak for the council that we're very interested in approving this resolution. We really do support the work and keep, and we really support the notion that we're going to keep moving ahead, implementing things. So part one of the recommended action will be very easy. Part two, provide any direction. Is it, is it a good step forward tonight if we ask for in the next calendar year, we would like to have a final version of a climate action plan? Is that the kind of thing that you're looking for?
Actually, I mean, the comments that I've heard so far from the council was basically what we were after. And it sounds like we can schedule, you know, future agenda bills to further talk about next steps. But we wanted to make sure that the council, that there was sincere interest in continuing the work that, that Anna has, has done so far. And it sounds like there is, so we're happy to keep, keep moving it forward.
Great. So you've, you've captured our sentiment and our desires for item two. Providing direction. So then let's go, let's go to item one, approving the resolution. Would someone make a motion to approve Resolution 20-13?
Bob, this is Melanie. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 20-13, adopting the final report, McCall's Framework for Climate Action Planning and draft 2018 greenhouse gas emission inventories as planning documents.
Colby, did you second it?
Yes, I did. That was me barking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 20-13, adopting the final report of McCall's Framework for Climate Action Planning and draft 2018 greenhouse gas emission inventories as planning documents. May I have a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Sauer?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes. That's approval of Resolution 20-13. And thank you, Michelle, for capturing the feedback on direction for next steps. And thank you, Anna, for doing a great job of helping us, not only tonight, but putting this report together. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
But we'll move on to the next resolution, 20-14. And that is McCall in delicious motion, advancing the city's urban agriculture goals.
So great. So Casey's available and she's going to go ahead and, and present her report. One other item I just wanted to add is our former mayor, Jackie Eamon, was on the phone. And I'm not sure if she still is. I don't see her. But I wanted to thank her because she really dedicated this funding source, this grant towards having Moss interns to do this type of work. And I think the work product and the experience, hopefully, that, that both Casey and Anna gained during this was valuable. So it was really a great opportunity for the city and Moss to partner. And then we were able to further move forward some of the comprehensive strategies. So anyways, I'll turn it over to Casey to present her report and that's it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hello. It's nice to be back with all of you again. I'm going to share my screen as well, real quick, here. All right. So, uh, as was mentioned, I am a University of Idaho graduate student at the McCall Outdoor Science School. And I have a background in urban agriculture. So when I approached Michelle for ideas about an internship, she suggested I look through the comp plan. And so this is what I'm going to talk about here tonight. These are some of the more memorable slides, maybe from my last little intro presentation I gave to all of you about the state of McCall's current food system. And just noting that the main points are that it is somewhat vulnerable and perhaps unsustainable. So we can talk about how to address that here. As we talked about last time, you know, agriculture can be a contributor to climate change, just kind of going off of what Anna was talking about. Because I see this work as being a part of the ultimate climate action plan that the city of McCall comes to. All of this work could be folded up into that climate action plan, just to give a little overarching framework of that. So yeah, agriculture can contribute to climate change quite a bit. You know, producing food and trucking it all over the place and stuff can be a huge greenhouse gas emitter. However, agriculture can also be a great reducer of climate change. So it can absorb carbon and sequester carbon in the soil. So there's a lot of potential here when we talk about greenhouse gas emissions and climate action plans to work on food systems as a part of that. Just as a reminder, I did go through the McCall Comprehensive Plan and I picked out five projects that had to do with urban agriculture and community food systems that I wanted to talk about with all of you. And so, so just as a review, these are the things that I worked on in the course of my internship. I looked at city-owned land inventory and I assessed its suitability for urban ag. Also looked at what it would take to create community gardens on city-owned land here in McCall. I also talked with Craig Utter at the Payette Land Trust to look at appropriate areas for conservation. We'll talk more about that. I also reviewed the city development codes to look at ways that maybe they might be hindering urban ag or contributing, we could, they could be potentially amended to help support more urban agriculture happening here. I looked at ways of expanding the farmer's market, our opportunities for local farmers and markets. And also looked at partnerships for greenhouse development.